So. Those and I sent, I prepared, I got, I collected the sense of the. HPC numbers. Some of the others as well, that are just even from the projects. In a sense of, of the direction that, that. If you put, I'm just trying to use this field for, but in terms of what. Everybody thought about it as well, my own thoughts, and that effort turned into the email with. To you and Count on Gutenberg. With our thoughts and recommendations on how to proceed. And so has everybody had a chance to review the email that I sent?
Yes, I did.
Yeah.
So. What I asked and what I tried to do is to focus in on what should be the first five priorities. You said later on plan for several years here, which is good, and frankly. I truly appreciate it. You obviously put a lot of thought into this and. Really. Going and you brought some bigger ideas to the table that we've not been considering in the past. So that's always a good thing when we do that. So anyway. You can see here after, after you review this, that. What we recommended in terms of what the top five things would be. We recognize that we're trying to do some more strategic. Groundwork, if you will, for long term where we're going. It, you know, it struck us that achieving the CLG status was something that's. Must be important to the town and something that we brought up. So. There is a. A fair amount of work to do to get from here to there. And but recognizing that. We thought that getting started with the resource survey. Was one of the ground, ground pieces to that that we could do. To work towards it and. And there's some discussion in here relative to the Maryland two fifty program. Though I have to admit that we had some confusion among us as to what exactly we could be doing in the Maryland two fifty program. Given that the town came. Much later than. And two hundred and fifty years ago. So. But there are some things we can do and there's some good ideas and we should talk about that. So those, those two things were there and then we put. What the other three items should be in terms of what we wanted to do. Obviously want to continue the plaque program, which really includes some of the other. Elements that were in your plan. You know, the oral history was part of what we're trying to develop. Kind of putting together a map and following along with the. With the plaques that we put out and we're planning to put out and developing an oral history for, that goes with each one of those. The website. May also fit here only in that. We need to develop something that will collect the information to, to, to create and send the oral history out. So that's, that might fit in there. If not. We may have to look at it differently. The second I, the second one is establishing the, the Firehouse Museum and certainly focusing on that initial opening. That we've been talking about. Then number three here is the resource survey to identify which buildings and sites are significant and that will help not only. In general, but it'll, it'll be a direct feed into. The work on the sign program and, and oral history program and all that. So it's a good fundamental thing that we should probably get to. But I already mentioned Maryland two fifty and then item ten, which was the update, the comprehensive plan will certainly support that. And that's, that's a no brainer. As far as I'm concerned, we'll support the comprehensive plan discussions when they occur. So I don't know if there's much of that in the first year, but certainly. That's the underpinning of everything we're trying to do across the town. So we'll do that. So anyways, that's just in general, what's in here. Don, I don't know if you had a chance to really absorb all that and, and think about. How that fits with what you had initially proposed. You can see that we pushed a couple of things down a little further and rode some of these things combined. But I think it gets us off to a good start and leverages the work that we've been doing for the last several years as well.
Okay, so. What I'm hearing is that only these items are what you're looking at doing for the next five years?
No, 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 the first five that we're going to start with in the next.
These are the first five. Okay.
And then, then the rest we could talk about. That kind of left it open for us to talk about it.
So I, I would tell you that, that you. The, the budget that you have right now is not going to cover this.
So.
The cert, the survey itself will suck that up and more.
Well, okay. So first of all, I just saw the budget for the first time myself. For those who aren't aware, we asked for eight thousand dollars. We got three. Which is two less than we had last year. So didn't fare well in the budget process. Dude, did we ever confirm one way or the other if the grant money is still viable for the firehouse?
I, I have not looked into.
Well, that's a procurement issue. Well, it's not a procurement issue. I think the, the, the comment that came up at the meeting, bear with me, the, the comment that came up at the last meeting was, no, those fronts are all expired. You can't use them. So is that true or not?
I, that's something I'd have to look into to see if there's anything there. But it's, it's something that procurement would have to look into in greater detail. With regard to the, the museum again. This is something that from staff's perspective. Is the, the issue with how the council wants to use a town asset has not been clarified.
Right.
And as part of this effort. I think the count, the, the council can weigh in. In terms of how they want, if, how they want to use the firehouse. You know, the, the, the goals that I know that you all have. For opening as a museum and, and I think it's a noble thing to do. Question is that, is that what the, the town council wants to do?
Right.
Because then you, you're, we're talking about, we have no allocation for resources for, to support a museum at this point. We have to look at when we can use the, 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 the initial study that was done. To identify the things that would have to be modified. Inside to make it, for example, ADA accessible.
Yeah.
And we'd have to have to draw a plan for what that is going to really going to look like inside.
Right.
We also need to have a ongoing, potentially an ongoing budget. You have staffing issues. And it's really, it's, it's a. Operating museum is not for the town count, it's not for the HPC. It's something that is, would be administered at by staff. Not necessarily me. I really don't. We're not in doing that part. That's not my role, but. Happy to help with that, but it, it's, it's an administrative function. We are the, we are from a, on a day to day basis. It's staff that implements council policy. Boards and commissions are there to help provide direction. But the fundamental operation of any tour of town asset is, is done through administration through the town staff.
So the train museum is scheduled to be open on the thirtieth. Will somebody be staffing it? Because we were planning to.
That's something that we need to, that we need to get on the same, same page of that.
This conversation, I'll be honest, is not on the same page with what we've been doing for the last three years.
I under.
And I find it a little bit surprising that, that, that the activities that you're asking for us to perform. Are somewhat different than where we were.
And I'm, all I'm doing is if the council wants to provide that direction, that's fine. I have no problem doing that. But these are the, the things that I've outlined just now. Are very typical in communities around the country. That's just how they're, that's the relationship.
I will tell you that, that I set up a. Paul Gutenberg and I have been talking about putting together a presentation for the council and that's, that's underway. And we'll get that presented to the council to get the question answered relative to what, what's the plan for the fire museum? We were not planning to discuss revised roles and responsibilities between town staff and the HPC. On how we're going to operate. And if that's what we need to do, then maybe that's a different topic altogether. Because what you're proposing here is not. What we've been doing for the last, since this thing's been put together. And so I'm a little confused.
Yeah. And, and that's why I want to make sure that we're, everybody's on the same page and the council has the prompt. To be able to address these things because myself and the town manager. Are kind of scratching our heads going, well, that's kind of an unusual relationship.
Well, it is, maybe it is, but it's not the relationship that we.
I understand, I understand.
New staff now and new people, so.
Well, do we work for the staff or is it the hardware right?
Well, the question I'm running into at this point, listening to the conversation is, is this really a? I mean, are, are your concerns based on? Like code or, or procedures that must be followed by the town? Or is this just normal operating procedure that you're accustomed seeing used?
This is, this is traditional operating procedure that I've seen in, in my thirty five years. Lines with Mr. Stevens. Operational understanding of the relationships with the boards, the commission, the, the board staff, commissions, council and staff. It's just, that's the, that's the normal working relationship that occurs. You know, it's, if the council wants to provide direction. You know, specifically that they want, they want the HPC to take on this role, totally respect that. But we want to have that clarity. And understanding in terms of what the council, the council wants to, how they want to use the asset and how they want to manage it. The, there's, there's no question that we can always use more staff. And it's, it's helpful. To have other people that, you know, we can rely on to make things work. That's great. But we need to have clarification from the council, especially the new council. On exactly what, how they want the, the. The assets used. And then we can bring in questions about how, how. Things have been managed in the past in terms of, you know, with, with the HPC has been doing. They still want to continue that process. It'll, you say it's a little bit, it's a little strange because. Town staff is usually responsible for managing town assets on a day to day basis. That doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, there can't be some participation and help. But the fundamental operation of it happens at, at, to town staff level on a day to day basis. So the same, it's really no different than how. Town staff manages the town as a whole on a day to day basis. We don't have individual council members going out and directing public works projects. We don't have the planning commission doing plan checks for, for new residential developments. We're out there directing how the developments is occurring. Those are, that's why you have a town professional town staff to do those things. And so we're trying to, I, I wanted to make sure that there's alignment. And if there's any deviation, I think myself and Mr. Stevens. Want to know what that is specifically from the county council. And because Mr. Stevens has to, is responsible for the daily operation of the town. And resources that are allocated for different functions.
Have you had any conversation with the mayor or the other, on this, on this question of how the? HPC and the staff are.
I don't report to the council. I report to Mr. Stevens. So I've had conversations, Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Stevens talked to the mayor about any of this?
I, I. At this point, I don't know if he has or not on it. I will tell you that, that. I've advised Mr. Stevens on kind of where things are at. With it. I think he's interested in, in having a meeting. With the chair and vice chair. Myself and, and I think that would be a helpful conversation for all of us.
How's it open from here today?
It's, it, well, what leaves us in kind of a weird situation here because we've operated. And planned and performed for the last, what, three or four years. Under a set of rules that we thought we were following according to what the town wanted us to do. By the guidance that we got from the town. Government at the time and now suddenly everything's changed and kind of leaves us wondering what the heck we're going to do.
Personally, if the staff wanted to take over management of the. Museum and we don't have to give up our free time on Saturdays as volunteers. So be it.
And that's, and that really becomes the, the town council's. Decision and then Mr. Stevens has to then ask for. For budget to do that and to acquire someone from staff, for staff, for staffing to do that.
Tell them, let us know.
It becomes, it, it's again, I'd say it's a, it's a broader management issue.
Has there been any issue that's been raised that says that what we've been doing is not working? And, or is this just a conversation you've had based on, well, we never saw this before, so it must be bad. What are, what are we doing here? Because you're about to take something that the town gives for free. Throw it all away. And hire staff to do it and get paid for it. And I don't understand, to be candid, given that the budget must be extremely tight. In, in terms of what's been done on the budget.
Not, not at all. And, and I don't actually have that perception. This is really its clarification of how the, the roles and responsibilities are to work. Everyone in here is, is new for the most part. And we're just bringing forward that. It's unusual the way the relationships have occurred. In the past, we want to make sure that the new council is providing direction on how its assets, how they want to use assets and how the assets.
How they want to use the museum and all that. That question is a legitimate question. And if nobody has been able to find any records that indicate. That, that we are acting under the assumption correctly that it's going to be a museum, although we did provide you a lot of supporting information for that. But given that, that's still an open question, I think it's fine to go to the council and ask that specific question. This idea that the whole relationship and, and, and roles and responsibilities need to change is new. And so I don't know what to deal with, I guess.
I, I think for now, wouldn't it make sense that we just continue to support the museum and have it open? We only have about three or four more times this year. And maybe they can work this out through next winter. And then if the town staff wants to take it over next spring.
Yeah, from a pragmatic standpoint, that makes perfect sense. And, and.
Is that agreeable?
Well, I don't know. Does it need to be agreeable from him? I don't know what we need to do here. I don't know what the working relationships are. I don't know who's making decisions. We've been acting under the guidance of the mayor for the last five years. So I don't understand why all of that is now in question because it's something you've seen.
It, it's, that's the typical. That's a typical. Relationship between the, between, we have a. A manager council relationship, which means that the, the town manager is the, is the, if you will, the CEO of these. He or she is the person who's responsible for managing the town on a daily basis. Identifying resource needs, implementing resources, right?
Okay.
The town manager is responsible to the town council. The town council provides direction to the town, to the town manager. For implementation of town council policy.
Okay.
The, the town council does not, does not provide, provides. Will provide, if they. If the council has. Questions or issues or things for consideration that comes up from the council meeting. They have their boards and commissions to act on their behalf to provide recommendations to them. Sort of they become the, the thinkers and. And recommend, recommending body to advisory, if that's the, yes.
So that's our capacity, not physically carrying it out.
Yes, ma'am. That's, you carry out, you carry out the, the, the wishes of a council, but it's done from here. Where you're identifying, you're identifying. Implement, you're basically identifying implementation policies of what it is that, that, how you want to approach. An issue or, or a task. If the council is either delegated that to you or through. The roles and responsibilities, in this case, the HPC that's codified in our ordinance. That's really the fundamental responsibilities. It's unusual to, to see. Commissions and councils be actively involved with managing resources. It's just, it, it's just, it, it's. Unusual. And that's something that I want to have the council weigh in on if that's how they want to structure it. And then the town manager would act accordingly to that.
So it's kind of entertaining to me that the question is, is that the way you want to do business rather than? You're doing business this way. It's different. Do you want to change it? You're starting from the premise of this is unusual. You shouldn't be doing this and you want to do something different.
Well, it's apparent to me.
And so I apologize for my clear frustration over this conversation, but I'm baffled by it.
Well, it's, again, it's, it's not too, I'm not trying to put it on the edge. It's, it, it's just, it's unusual. The way, and, and I understand that, you know, that. Lack of, maybe perhaps a lack of, of, of leadership from in the past. That from either from the department or from the, the, the town staff. Has led to an evolution of what it is, how you're operating today. I can tell you that you have the leadership and the professional expertise on your staff. To not only to provide coaching and, and a leadership for you to make decisions. But we also have, I think, a more. A more expanded staff to provide some of these other, address some of these other questions. We have a, a town manager now who's, who's very well qualified, who understands roles and relationships. Based on his professional educator, his education, professional experience. And so we're, we're trying to bring things into more. Ubiquitous alignment with the way organizations are run, at least at a municipal level and. Provide that to the council as a decision point. Do they want things to continue the way they are? They don't. What is it that they want? How do they want us to proceed? And that's fine. But very flexible that way.
So in that sense, the town council could just turn around and say, keep going the way you're going?
Yes, potentially they could. And then we would need to.
And in order to get that to that point, it has to go through. Okay, right now we're going through you. Then it goes on to our councilman. Then our councilman takes it on to the council itself. So that's, that's the chain of command. And then eventually it comes back to us with an answer, yes or no?
Fundamentally, there, there needs to be a vehicle for bringing these types of questions and issues. To the council. Yeah, I think what I'd like to do is to arrange a meeting with both gentlemen and Mr. Stevens. I invite you, but we don't have, we would, that'd become a public meeting. And so that's, that doesn't mean we'll get back to you and.
I had a problem.
Debrief you. But as the chair and vice chair, it seemed the most appropriate. And we can have, we can have some further discussions. With Mr. Stevens in his office and develop a methodology for. Answering some of these very basic questions.
Well, the methods, methodology seems clear that this is where. Councilman Gutenberg, who's the councilman rep to this HPC. Would be the one that we prepare. With his, with his inputs, obviously. What, what, what we're doing, what our recommendations are and where to go forward. And then I guess he could take it to get it on the schedule with the council to discuss. One way or the other.
Yeah, I think that.
I think we are in January.
Who knows? But I mean, we've, we've done nothing now. We're getting really good at doing nothing following this plan. So we can continue to do nothing. And be very efficient. But. Paul and I have been talking about this. We've talked about where we are relative to the budget. He's looking for information. We've prepared an initial draft briefing for him relative to the fire museum. And if we need to put together another presentation relative to. Operations, how we've been doing them and what you guys are suggesting might be a different model. Then we need to put something together for that and happy to do it.
I think we need to, well, we can approach this one step at a time. I think the. Kind of going back though to where we, what we're here for. Is to talk about, is to talk about a work plan. And I would like to develop a five year work plan so that there's, there's, and it's. The, the, the work plan provides for specific direction. It allows for budgeting, it allows for planning over the course of the next five years. And so I would like to talk about this and, and. What you all. What direction you have. So that we can provide, I can provide this to the council. Whether or not the staff will have its own recommendations potentially if there's, if there's, if there's not alignment. But I will represent your, 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 your direction or your recommendations, of course. Ethically and professionally to the council. But I want to have a, make sure I understand. What your position is for some of these other items.
Sure.
On here. If these are the, if these are the, the. Five items that you've listed here. Now, this should be, I, I, I will caution the, anybody on the commission. There should not be serial meetings. Serial meeting is defined as calling one person up and getting their opinion, calling another person up, getting their opinion. And basically lobbying or counting votes. That's.
This is not lobbying and counting votes.
I understand.
As for inputs from everybody in terms of what they thought of the plan and what they thought the prior.
Gentlemen, this, this is all new to us and.
I'm, I'm very aware of the Open Meetings Act and what's required in pub, for public. You know, sunlight stuff. Okay, I'm familiar with it. We did not run a serial meeting.
Okay, I'm, I'm not, I'm not accusing anyone of doing anything. I've just, I'm bringing it up just as a matter of information.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Yeah. So if, if these are the, if these are the items that you're. And I'm going to put a date on this just so I can reference it as a document.
Yeah, put it August first, which was when I sent it to you.
Okay, August first. I will present this to the, to the council. At one of their upcoming meetings.
Well.
For their, for their consideration. Just providing feedback. I can, if this is. And to be clear, this is your intent. To do these things for, for, for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six.
Oh yeah, that's what we brought into since twenty five.
That number two is off the, off the. Table at this point.
No.
Well, there's no funding.
No, I don't know. You can, I still don't know if there's funding. They didn't fund it as part of our budget that we asked for. I see, I can't tell what they included or did not include. And I still don't know the status of the, the grant money that was set aside specifically for the firehouse.
Okay.
So I don't know.
If, if that's the, the, for the COVID monies.
Yeah.
You're referring to. I will, I will ask about that again.
We had it, then we didn't have it. Now we have it again and now it appears we don't have it. I, I don't understand why the. The town paid for the. Overall plan that was done by Davis Corporation, correct?
They, they had already.
Feasibility assessment.
Yeah.
And the town paid for that feasibility.
They had started a feasibility assessment.
I wonder why.
Figured back down and expanded it.
Yeah.
I wonder why they agreed to do that if. And, and to put that money out. If they weren't wanting us to go forward.
This was for the one story section.
Okay.
It was for the garden and for the beautification commission. And then when we inquired about the two story portion, they added that to it and that was.
So it's not off the table.
So the, the, the monies, there is, there was money, as I understand it. That was allocated through the, the COVID relief.
Correct.
That was used to pay for, I forget her name. The architect to, to go in and do an analysis of the existing building and to paint the building. From what Phillips told me. That was the only allocation that was, that was given. And, and I agree with you. It's, it, it begs the question, what's the long term intent with it? I don't know what that question is and it was done by a prior council. So. That's one of the things that, that clearly needs to be articulated as part of a larger conversation with the council. And the work plan provides that opportunity to, to help. Understand some of these issues and what the intent is of this council.
Yeah, we don't have anybody from the old council, the new council.
Well, the, the mayor James.
Okay, so she's the only. Continuity, so that to.
She can provide some context for sure. Of that. But I, I will, but kind of moving on, I, I will tell you that. These. What I again tried to do in here and I advised you in the previous staff report. This is way too much staff. There's no way that staff can, can manage these, all five things going on at the same time right now. For, for one fiscal year.
Was this, was this supposed, just for clarification, because I'm not sure I approached my response to your email. From the idea that this was going to be for the upcoming fiscal year or for one fiscal year. My understanding was that you've got your five year plan here. And you've got it organized.
By year.
Certain way by year and, and process and. We were to look at this and say, well, okay, that's one way we could do it. Could we possibly organize and prioritize? Different items to come within the context of the same five year plan, just organize them differently. different items to come within the context of the same five-year plan, just organize them differently? So I'm not, my understanding was that we're not trying to accomplish all of this inside of a fiscal year. Or even two.
Well, the way it was set up, you had it phased by year by year by year.
Yeah, yeah.
And so the idea was to look at what do we think you should be doing in the first year or so uh, going forward, and these are five things that I thought emerged, so that was the.
So if you had.
For a year.
So I would think if we.
Actually we could push down beyond that.
Five, then you would be doing two in the first year and two in the second year.
The.
It's meant for five years, yeah. And this was meant for one year, that, this, this is meant for.
When, when.
We put that in that.
Yeah, if, if, if you look at the original plan that Don put together here.
Right here.
He, he broke it up into what's gonna happen in which the years.
Yes.
So I did not, so I took the ask for the thought inputs on the thought, the first five. Put together where I did the first five on, on Don's plan for cover twenty-five, twenty-six. And uh, maybe even into twenty-seven a little bit.
Yeah.
So the time phasing here would probably need to be reevaluated. Um, so this, uh, this year's almost over, right? Or we're just getting into it, I don't know where we are, but the.
Just getting.
We're getting into it, so.
Budgets, to be clear, but we have a new budget as of July first.
Correct.
And that runs through July, through June thirtieth to twenty-sixth.
Yeah, so is that the right, we call that the twenty-five, twenty-six year?
That's what fiscal, what's fiscal year is covers.
Okay.
They, I think the town, the, the, the treasurer refers to this as the, as the, the fiscal year twenty-six budget, but it's um, I'm more familiar with it covering the span of, of.
Yeah.
Two-year period.
What it does, so, so the, the first five here that we're, that I put forward in my suggestion did not fully time phase everything, so can we do it all in the first year? Or will it run into the second year, that's for further discussions, we get to the specifics.
Yeah, I didn't expect it to be in one year, I'm just bringing.
Yeah, no, that's right.
I thought that it would probably be phased in.
Yeah, yeah.
And if, if this plan could be shuffled to accommodate the priorities that we wanted to have and still break down with the same fiscal alignment, I'm fine with that too.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
If it works out.
Yeah, I mean, if there's certain things are gonna, if, if uh, if, if getting the, the five things executed is gonna be requiring staff and hiring of staff that doesn't exist and there's no budget for uh, then nothing's gonna get done this year and then we'll wait till next year. Uh, that's all fine, if that's, if that's what's gonna, because it sounds like this was written based on what's professional staff can do as opposed to.
Okay, this was written.
What we've been doing.
Based on that, what professional staff can.
What, what I'm how I organize this was based on my assessment of staff's current capacity, what we anticipate, excuse me, what we anticipate um, to be able to do moving forward.
Okay.
Um, I have tried because right now it's, there is, I've got so much on my plate. Um, I need, I reached out um, to other staff, you met Lucinda Anderson last, last meeting. She would be the point person to help with the Maryland two fifty program.
Okay.
Um, I've put on here.
Can we speak to that for a minute?
Let me, if I, if I just, so for, and so, and I also put on here for the preservation professionals list. Those, those items, I think, and um, and your plaque program that you had started, I think that can be wrapped up this year without any problem. Um, I think those are three things that can, can be done um, within the next ostensibly in the next eleven months. Um, and we can have something that we can show the council and to the community, here's what we've produced, this is what come out of the HPC. So we, we, we need to build up, I would recommend building this thing up with based obviously on, on capacity, what we can do at staff level, also based on what budget you have, right? You start building up wins, right? So you're, you have to start down here and then start ramping up. And what this does is it, it considers those things, it considers alignment with uh, with the future comp plan update that we'll be doing. Um, it also provides for uh, some things that are gonna be more costly, a little bit of budget ramp up for it, so the council can see these things coming up. If we get their consent to in, in approbation to uh, uh, then uh, to move forward with these things, then we can start planning for and budgeting for some of these other more costly things, such as doing a, a comprehensive historic resource survey of the town. Um, and so all of those things have been balanced in here, and it doesn't, doesn't mean to say that we couldn't shift some things around perhaps a little bit, but it, it's it's somewhat of a, of a semi-delicate ecosystem in terms of staffing, budgeting um, and uh, future planning based on some, some assumptions.
Okay. I think we have a clear understanding of that. What are we going to try to accomplish today?
So.
At this workshop.
So for this workshop is to get alignment in terms of, does the, my recommendation is to pick two or three things that it, for, uh, that we can focus on for the next five years.
Which is what we did, but that doesn't align with.
Well, and, and that's, and again, you, I, I, I'm just here to advise.
Yeah, we're working through this, I understand that.
Just here to, here to advise.
Yeah.
So if there's something that you don't want to do for, for um, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, then uh, then that would be stricken and put somewhere, it can be either put in a different period of time, or it could be removed as a future consideration. The way I did on the, at the very end here, I had an item on here that, um, I put in here um, under number sixteen was a lease loan program. It was a concept that, that I've, I had formulated, but there's work that needs to be done and and putting that together, that's maybe a little bit harder one to do. Um, and something that would occur that I would think would be more appropriate to occur later on over the next five years to do, but it was a little bit too much and I, I, I put that in for future considerations.
We actually explored that at one time.
We did.
Yeah.
Got the Smithsonian.
And we found that there are enormous hurdles and restrictions to try to get that to happen, so.
And, and it might be a modification, I'd, I'd be love to learn more about what you, what you found, I, I'd seen it done in another community. Um, and it was perhaps a little bit more, less formal thing, but there wasn't, there was an arrangement, there was an agreement between the town and, and um, a, in this case, it was a uh, an owner that had material culture and it was used to put into a um, into a um, um, uh, I can see the name of the store, Trader Joe's um, uh, store, so it was kind of a really kind of a cool thing because a lot of, a lot of, a lot of businesses actually incorporate public history in there.
Which, which they have here in the Playa, that's been going on here for twenty years.
And, and so, yeah, and so it's, it's kind of great to kind of maybe try to formalize it and provide an easy process for somebody moves into town that wants to take advantage of the things we have out there.
We had tried, I actually just looked at the Smithsonian because we had some people working on the HPC at the time that had also worked with the Smithsonian. And so we explored if they had some available materials that maybe would help us with establishing the time sense of timing for one of our displays, but.
Caboose is what we were.
Yeah, caboose and a little bit for the town um, history museum and, and uh, the restrictions were just way off the chart.
Yeah, you might, that might be maybe a little high for the Smithsonian, but.
Hearing your explanation, you, you mentioned that it was a person that had some personal items that you were, you were putting in, I didn't consider that. So maybe that's an aspect of it, we could.
That should be a way to resolve us becoming the addict of the community.
The time that uh, uh, the Ed Middleton family loaned us the big um, or what do you call it? They had all the artifacts from the tornado. And it was displayed here at Town Hall, it's.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I do kind of remember that, I'm also thinking of when um.
So that would have been a loan item.
David said he had come across that um, collection of Coca-Cola memorabilia that we thought might be cool for a Coca-Cola display, since we have a plant in town or did have a plant. Um, but that didn't go anywhere, unfortunately.
So anyway, so kind of going, going back on here, so what I was hoping to be able to do today is to get some consensus on items that we would be working on or we would commit ourselves to with council blessing um, through the next, through the next five years with uh, to look at things that, and if um, uh, if there's things that the commissioner wants to, to shuffle around, let's see where we might be able to put them in. Um, or if you think, oh, that's just a horrible idea and we need to take that off and remove it, then that's fine too. Um, but the, the goal was to try to at least have um, a couple, a couple projects every year um, that I think is, is reasonable, that can be done, that we can budget for, that we can get, we can ramp up so that the resources are there when we're ready to execute it, and it's just it, it, the, the challenge becomes um, it is, is the assumptions that we make in terms of staffing, budgeting and, and timing of these things. Um, for the first year, I would tell you that if we're interested in doing the La Plata two fifty program or participating in that, that's something you gotta start now.
And, and I will express my feelings on that, to me, that comes under um, the events coordinator for the town. Now, we can give her ideas, but as far as it getting carried out, uh, I don't see that as a role for us.
Is there somebody from the broader town perspective that's in charge of dealing with the Maryland two fifty program?
No, not at this point.
You're not suggesting that the HPC take it on?
And my thought also was, the, the county is also doing things for the two fifty. So we didn't want to be repeating what the county's already doing, so we've got to work hand in glove, in my opinion, on that one.
So you're looking for us to recommend what types of events that we would ask the town to implement or to look into as part of the Maryland two fifty program?
So, good question, so for what, for, for this portion of it, I've suggested that we participate in the Maryland two fifty program. Um, and I, in Charles County, it, I, you know, can do their own thing, but we're our own entity, right? And so we can do things that, that um, that La Plata wants to do.
Well, and exactly, to me would be um, La Grange, I mean, maybe the county has already contacted La Grange about having a um event there, so, you know.
And, and that's.
Want to be doing it if they're doing.
Sure, you don't want redundancy.
I mean, to me, that's in the town, I feel like it should go with the town, but it's the county.
One and only real claim to the revolutionary history.
Could be on that Maryland historic.
Although Christchurch was established before the revolutionary time too, so. Well, it's, it's important to be evident, it's here now and.
It's here now, yeah.
But they, you know, it, it could be, um, and, and I think the redundancy is absolutely fair, and that's what we need to think about that as well. Um, the, the pro, what I would suggest on this is I have, I just put down some several ideas of things that could be done. Um, the, to, to kind of get a, a sense of things that we might do that you would be happy with doing. And so let's look at the list and is there anything in here that you don't want to do? And then is there anything that you would like to the town or for uh, for town staff to look into doing, not saying it's, it's, none, not all these things are gonna be done necessarily, I doubt it. But are there, there's, are the things that we, we haven't considered that, hey, this might be a great idea to be able to do this if it can be pulled off?
Mm-hmm.
And then basically uh, the camp, the, the HPC would say, hey, if you do any of these things over the, over the next the, you know, between um, in, in twenty twenty-six, we'd be happy with it regardless of what they are. And so that gives, that would give Lucinda the flexibility to look into things that are viable to consider uh, redundancies that, that the Charles County is doing. Uh, but fundamentally, here's like a list of things that we can do.
Well, in twenty twenty-six, we had already planned to, if I understand it correctly, uh, while we have the signage going up for the Schoolhouse Museum, Schoolhouse rather, not museum, but that doesn't tie into the two fifty. But uh, then we, we talked about the exhibits that you have and the La Plata building at the train station museum being brought here and displayed for a period of time.
An expanded, expanded version of the tornado exhibit there too.
Yeah, so that, those were things that we had talked about and um.
I mean, and those, and those, those are some things that might could just be easy, low fruit that we can pick.
They are.
But we can include, so let's include those on there.
So I'm sorry, I'm struggling with who owns this project? What are we supporting? Because we're not gonna do the, as.
Because we don't have any money to do anything.
Do anything, so who's, who's doing it? And we, if it's just, just some ideas to somebody, who is somebody? What are we doing? What's the schedule we have to work within so that we understand where you want to go? Because right now, I got nothing.
Well, hopefully, hopefully we have grants that we can use for Maryland two fifty, hopefully.
But I think it's too late for that.
The, the, the HPC is providing policy, is providing policy direction about what it is that they would like to see happen. Um.
So you're asking for a policy statement from the HPC relative to the Maryland two fifty celebration?
I'm asking for the, the, the larger, larger issue is talking about our work plan. Sub-issue is the specific programming. For this particular item, I'm looking for feedback from the, from the commission uh, with regard to some of the ideas that are already here. If there's some ideas that you go, no, I don't really, I, we don't want to do that, or we really prefer not to do that. Um, and if there's things on here that, that you'd like to see be done as part of the special year pro, year long.
So you're just asking for our recommendation, but it is not our job to carry it out.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And then we can.
The word host is what kind of threw me.
The town.
Won't you need to coordinate with Charles County?
No, that's responsible. That's not what he asked for, no, he asked for our thoughts on activities. And see me, it's an agenda item on our next meeting to suggest Maryland two fifty uh, items from the HPC to somebody.
We can, we can, we have to look at the broader picture on this right now, and, and this is looking at programming for the next five years. If the council approves the, a, a work plan and it has the two fifty stuff on it, we may have future meetings or special meetings to talk about specific programming and get your direction or get your, your advice in terms of some implementation issues or things, or there's decision points fundamentally. And that's where, you know, myself and Lucinda would be in here going, hey, what do you think about this? This, we're, we're think, we're honing these things down in here of what's possible. We want to get your feedback on it, so you're providing, Richard, and, and commission, you're, you all are providing you, the, the feedback and, and the broader policy, uh, for lack of a better term, um, direction to staff to know what it is that you would like to see implemented. It's staff's role to implement that um, based on our feedback to you in terms of what we can do, what budget there is, uh, what support that we have.
Can we still seek a role in implementation? I mean, coordinating with the staff?
Well, again, I, this is where I want to get council involvement um, with this in terms of the, the role that um, in terms of roles and responsibilities for implementing, uh, implementing projects.
Well, maybe not so much as specific with, as a member of the HPC, but just as an advisor. For example, if I want, if I want to roll the, the, the HPC originally was going to do this hundredth anniversary for the Playa Tornado near and dear to me, I've got a lot invested in it, obviously.
Sure.
And I have a pretty clear ideal what I would like to see done and how it would be done. I could bring that whole thing to the town and say, do it. And somebody could take that and run with it in a completely different direction, which would greatly disappoint me.
I could, I mean, I could see, I could see for something like the, for twenty twenty-six of having, of having, you know, maybe a one or two-person subcommittee to help, like a steering committee um, that could help with staff um, and provide that sort of that, um, that direction um, or uh, uh, recognize opportunities that are there that we may not know. Um, so that you do help provide some of that leadership um, as a steering committee role.
Okay, um, all right.
But it would not be, to be clear, it would not be the, the HPC uh, running the, the, the programming of. Running the, the, the programming of it. Or, or putting it together, that's, that's a staff function.
I understand.
But we could easily call a subcommittee that doesn't require a public meeting notice. Or we have a subcommittee, one or two people, that was desirable. That could, that could easily meet with staff when we need to and, and work out some of the, the, the kinks and get feedback and so forth and. And I think that would work fine, but for larger projects, that's not unusual to do.
Okay. So I've got, I've got my foot in two different places right now, specific to the tornado. One is personal with. Private things going on, this documentary we're doing and this, this book we're writing and promoting that. And this play that is going to be maybe at the Ford's back players. Then the other foot is through the HPC and recognizing just the history and the town and all that stuff. And so one of the other. He's not really a member of the committee, but he, he is, sits in sometimes, is the guy that I'm writing the book with, Tony Pozzila. And Tony tends to go off and do things on his own when he can't get it the way he wants it through here. Go out and do it. And that could happen.
Has, that has its own rest.
That could happen here, too, though. Yeah.
So I would put, then I would proffer on that is that we. As part of the, the twenty twenty six celebration. That we, that we would implement and, and guide beyond this. What would you, what would you see as a programming? Then for the, for the train related? Topic to bring in material culture into the, into the lobby?
Well, there wasn't so much train station.
You were looking to do something relative to the tornado.
It was town, town history. Yeah, yeah, town history related.
Yes, we were looking to do something in the lobby here, pull together an exhibit.
Okay, so, all right, so.
Tornado of nineteen twenty six.
Nineteen twenty six.
So, so we can put, and these, by the way, these letters on here, that I have in here. Are no representation of preference. It's just, I've done that just to identify the areas. So I'm just going to add to it. So Jay would be, develop.
Well, it's already developed, the program. Are we talking back?
The core of it is, I mean, basically, the core of it is the exhibit at the train station museum. But then in the course of us researching the book, and I mean, just this past couple of weeks. I've located six photos, that four of which had never been published relating to the tornado in twenty six.
Development is, for, for this context, is to put together a formal. Structure of what this is going to look like and when and where and those type of things.
So we're looking at.
I think you're ahead of this, ahead of the game.
Yeah, I think we are, too, which is why you're low hanging fruit. This is probably the best definition of it right here. It's almost already done. We already have the core of it.
So develop programming. Programming. With. Town Hall. Exhibit. Or. Remembrance. Of the nineteen twenty six La Plata. Tornado, right?
Do you want that as a separate work?
Well, at this stage, it's probably gonna, I mean, they're gonna probably overlap, I would think. So if it. It wouldn't have to be specific to Maryland two fifties, but if the funding is possible through Maryland two fifty, then maybe we'll do it that way. Right now, we have a lot of the materials. I'd basically need to get some photos enlarged, and that would be about it.
These are, I'm, I'm, this commission. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude. I'm sorry, what was wrong? Uh huh, what was wrong?
Well, I was, listen, it's, it's a commission workshop. He's here to ask questions and he can. If you're going to shut this down and turn this into something silly, we're going to finish it. We'll be gone.
I, I'm not, I'm just trying.
I didn't invite him here to waste two hours to watch us.
For, for our, for our record purposes. We have the, we have the three commission members, but I have other people speaking. Then I need to have them recognize them as, so we have for our record who's speaking.
That's fine. That's, that's what I'm getting at.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll add that to the.
And I guess the other item is the schoolhouse marker that's going to be.
Yeah, there's a couple of these things that, that line up.
Yeah, I mean, would these have to be in the context of Maryland two fifty, or these, could these just be projects that we do? I mean, I guess.
Well, if they're.
They were going to happen anyway. So, and Maryland two fifty is going to happen anyway.
Sure. So I would look at, at these things, the Maryland two fifty are special, one and done type of things.
Yeah.
That they're not reoccurring, they're, they're, they're kind of a one and done. If there is, you mentioned the marker program. How is that different from what the plaque program?
Well, it is part of the plaque program. This is a particular marker that's being made to be put on the location of where the. Original schoolhouse was, which is across from the helio pad at our hospital. And it's a large marker. I don't have it.
Historic site marker.
It's one of those large historic sites.
Like we've only paid for half of that. So the other half is coming out of this current budget, and then that is not going to leave us much money for anything else.
The last time they did that, they, they, there's a current marker that was placed a lot further away on World Lane. I think, was that done by the town?
That was done at this centennial year, done by the town.
And there was a whole pageant. I mean, they had, they had tornado survivors there. They had.
That was nineteen.
Sixty, seventy people in attendance, and they made a big, big deal out of it. I'm not sure. What our plans are for placement of this one, but we could, we could certainly turn.
It's way too, yeah.
Bit of a ceremony.
I, I sort of see that within the plaque program.
Yes, it is part of the black program.
Right. So we can, we can include in there explicitly. So what would, how would you, how would you phrase it in a sentence? This, we got the, we got that first sentence, so let's carry it on to say, this includes the placement.
Of the historical marker. We're going to play that elementary school. That was destroyed in the tornado of nineteen twenty six.
Historical marker of the La Plata, La Plata school?
Yeah, marking the location of La Plata school.
Okay, marker of the location.
Good morning, Jane.
Good morning.
Destroyed.
By the way, as you take this topic forward. Had a conversation with the mayor about this sometime ago. And we were trying real hard to acknowledge the tornado occurred and the tragedy that went with it. But there's more of a focus on what came out of it in terms of some of the good things as well. The mayor, in, in candid terms was, I don't want this, the town to be known as a tornado alley, right? So it's, it's kind of a relations thing, and I, and I get it. So the, the, some of the things that would be highlighted in this exhibit that we're talking about here would not only be. The tragedy that occurred, but some of the things that came out of it. We had the hospital born because of it. We have a. Volunteer fire department and ambulance that was born out of it. So the, and rather, and more focused on this. So just for your background, as to, as to how we're approaching this and why.
No, I, I, I can, and I understand, I, I completely understand her point. On that, I, I think it's, it's, the approach become, I, the, her, her comments well taken, it's. You, you don't want to focus just on the death and devastation. You want to put it in context that here is something horrible that happened to the town. Here's how we, here's, you know, and so the story is, is that here's how we grew stronger as a community because of it. And demonstrating that, that strength of that, that phoenix sort of rising.
Yes.
You know, back up. And so it has that kind of a theme to it. I think it's, it's really kind of inspirational thing you do.
The documentary that we're working on, which is obviously a separate thing. Takes that angle, that very, that very angle and compares twenty six to two thousand and two. And draws the analogies or the connections between how people reacted and both. And I, I had planned. Back when I thought I was going to be doing this myself, to highlight that very aspect of it. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to. Be part of, say, a, a steering committee or an advisory committee, because I wanted to have that guidance in there as well.
I think you'd be, I think you'd be ideal for that, provide some of that, that, that help. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so, so the plaque program would include not just the, the, on the vintage houses. But also on for the.
We're not working on the houses at all right now. Right now, our focus, after this. Plaque, the schoolhouse plaque goes up, then our focus will be on businesses. Within the town to be marked next, and then we will go to private residences.
And, and what I sort of, Mary, but I'm, what I'm seeing for this here is not so much the working. Aspect of it, but developing, I think we talked a little bit about it last time, developing a. We'll call it, we'll call it an application process.
I think you called it criteria.
Right area, yeah, exactly. For, for, that goes, that, that goes beyond the HPC where somebody could. Come in and say, hey, I like this program. Well, eventually we would have it on our website. I'd like to mark my house. Here's the criteria and the processing that needs.
We have all that. We just need town staffing to help us.
Perfect.
Get it in a computer.
So, and this is why I thought some of this was kind of low hanging fruit, that we can, we can finish this this year. And, and get those types of wins and get it up on our computer or up on our, on our website. But we just, we, so this, the plaque program really is about organizing it. And the implementation of it, you know, by the, by the HPC using whatever remaining budget it has to. To get it started by introducing some of these into the community and building on that by advertising it. Great. So, okay, so let's, so is there, let me go back. So we covered one and two. Is there, other than the, the, the town exhibit for the, for the tornado? Is there any other things that were kind of one and done, special programming? With that, that the commission would like to, like to consider. Trying to implement.
So a couple of thoughts that crossed my mind. Item E here talks about historic house building site tour. We're looking to develop a walking tour anyway, based on what we're doing in the plaque program. So that would probably be one that we could pick up. In stride with what we're already working on. And if there's funding and whatnot that comes with this to help us get it in place, that'd be awesome.
Now. On that, I do know that in twenty twenty six, the Maryland House and Pilgrimage Tour. Which Jane maybe can speak to that, which is overseen here locally by the Charles County Garden Club. Will be having a home tour, home and garden tour. I think. Some of the focus is going to be in Port Tobacco, but whether it will come up to La Plata and, and to La Grange, I do not know. We'll get to look into the, I don't have any more, huh?
Yeah, there's already.
So, so we don't want to duplicate what they're already doing.
Sure. And, and again, this, this kind of, this list is sort of. You know, if there's general agreement, if we get, if we can get at least a couple of these things done, and they're not all going to get done, but if we can get a couple of them done.
Yeah.
Then, you know, that's really our, we've, we've met our goal. If we can do, and we have some, some lower hanging fruit, or like you said with the exhibit. That, that's probably, we can probably cross that one off our list, that that's something that can easily be done. So we're counting on that. So. Maybe we have four that we can do.
Well, the town has, and over, in the course of any given year, the town does have regular celebrations that it does. You know, you've got the La Plata Day Celebration, you've got the. You have the holiday kickoff event, you have the opening of the train station museum and the closing of the train station museum, and you have. The farmer's market, you have the veterans' celebrations at the veterans'.
American Legion.
American Legion, there you go, thank you. Some of these could be rolled in with those events.
I would, I would suggest that we treat them separately as, as special events. Because then they're, they're distinguished between events that are, are recurring every year, because you wanted, you're trying to. Get people to come out for something that's unique that they won't see it again. And so, and it, it adds to the amount of activities, because we're basically. Separating it out from an existing event and saying, this is a special event. And so it looks like the town, and, and I, I see your point. But I would look at it as, this is a special event that, you know, one year only type of thing. And then it shows it, when we, we look at, at the things that we're, would be able to achieve. Maybe we can really, we can help facilitate getting those one or two, three, four, or five items. By treating it as a separate event. Not that they couldn't be rolled into it.
Well, one I had in mind was one that I sort of. Did somewhat the first year we had the train station museum open. We had, I guess we closed it up right on the very, we had shop small La Plata, I guess. And that's kind of like the official kickoff for the Christmas shopping season, among other things. And now most every year, we've also had Santa Claus there as well as a draw. If we put a. If we themed something for the celebration of the holidays around the, the beginning of the town, eighteen seventies-ish, eighteen seventy two, eighteen eighty eight. Theme holiday celebration. For the station itself or for that museum area, because we're going to be doing something along those lines anyway. Or just something on that celebrates the way the town has celebrated the holiday in the past. That might be something we could pull off as well.
And that's where Lucinda, I think, Lucinda is pretty amazing. She's, she thinks in terms of. Of bigger and, and, and better and how we can take something that maybe is just not, just focused around the museum, but townwide. And how we would do that. And I would defer to her in terms of those. Some of those ideas, but, but these are the types of things that, you know, I was talking about earlier where. You know, if we, we get the general going ahead, we can put some of these things down on here, right? And then as Lucinda's going through them, maybe we have, we'll have, I can see having. Subsequent meeting or two, certainly to sort of work out some of the details. Either as a, as with point subcommittee members or with the, with the commission as a whole.
Okay, so would I put that as a?
So let's.
Holiday celebration and we work out the details on how we do it later, or?
Well, let's put it, let's, it's, it's the vision. So we wanted you, so your idea is, I'll put this on the S K. Is to.
I think recognize the various ways the town has celebrated the traditional Christmas season, I guess, and, or the holiday season. Because the town has always had events celebrating that some way or another. Everything from Santa Claus coming on a fire truck to the courthouse to hand out stockings to the children, making toys to. Putting lights up in town and the star on the top of the water tower and all the things that used to be done.
So is that? Guess I must have zoned out. I thought that was an annual celebration that we're not going to do, well, in this, in the focus of it. Are you looking to do something?
I'm looking, well, I'm looking to sort of expand it to. Because there are a number of different holiday celebrations that go on around the town that maybe all of them take this historic theme. Or maybe each one take a historic period and, and, you know, look at. Focusing their particular celebration on that period. I don't know.
So, okay, so how can we, how would we write this to say? That conveys. Wrecking special exhibit at the museum to. Identify, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud here, special exhibit. Fill in the blank where? To. Recognize the La Plata celebration of, of Christmases in years past or something like that.
Yeah, that's about as good as it can probably get. Ah, I see, I'm not, it's, it's, it's sort of kicking around in my head right now, and I haven't really developed it thoroughly in my head yet, but.
I think, I think this is a little premature.
It might be, it might be.
When, you know, we talked about getting that, that train station garden society back down here. We did that one year. We, we were lucky that year because it's an outdoor exhibit. You recall that?
Oh, the train, the model train.
The model train.
Yeah.
And another thing, we had the family from Indian Head that has. And another thing, we had the family from Indian Head that has that large display.
Oh, that's the one I was thinking of. I don't know the first one. It's like.
Yeah. I don't recall exactly the name of these.
Yeah, and I'll remember, like three o'clock in the morning, I'll remember.
Bob will know it.
But I mean, we can, yeah, Bob would know it. Bob has the information for both those.
Yeah.
They, they.
So, uh, are we making progress here, Bob? But as far as. Answering this question on the Maryland two fifty thing, because I'm losing the focus. Well, yeah, I, I think we are. It's just we're, I'm, the, the prompt right now is the, the, the. Suggested programming that could be looked into, and if we wanted to expand on that, and that's what we're, we're doing at this point.
And by definition, it needs to occur now.
Well, we need to start planning for it. Yes, I mean, there's, the, the longer we wait, some things are, are going to be less viable than others. Um, okay, so it's special, special Christmas exhibit. Um, at the. Train station or where are you looking?
Well, I guess, I mean.
It's premature.
Yeah, it might be premature. I know, you see, the town hall does a thing every year for the holidays.
That's right.
And train station sort of does, I mean, the whole, the whole shop small has a transitional.
Right now.
Holiday thing to it.
The, the, our activities in the past, we open a shop small. We often have Santa Claus there. Uh, we've discussed having potentially having some music there, which would be nice for all and some other things, activities at the train station.
Maybe encourage, maybe encourage the, the participants of shop small to, uh, to highlight. A historic town way of celebrating the holidays as part of what they're doing for their own shop small event.
And so, and that's, that's something that really you're expanding it out to become, to become a special program there. Because what you're kind of talking about, it's kind of a more of a, a month, a, a rotating.
And it's outside the purview of the HPC. Um, quite candidly, we have, we, we were not going to organize or, or, we could say that looks like a good idea.
Well, man, we're not organizing, we're just recommending, right? I mean.
You're, you're recommending, and this is.
Just recommending, we're not organizing.
I'm sorry, then I don't understand when you put something in our strategic plan to do something as an HPC. I don't understand how this kind of conversation that really requires the town to do. Because we're right here, right, because we're developing programming for the, for Maryland two fifty. That the commission would, would, it would endorse. That staff, if we're basing this on, on getting at least two or three things. Lucinda will have the capacity, uh, has the capacity to do that.
Okay.
And if she can determine that these are viable options, then she would, I, I would see moving forward. That she would report back and say, these things are possible to do. These are the things that, that I'm going to facilitate doing. On here, um, so that, you know, it's, it's, so that we're, you're aware of what's going on for your direction. Uh, in terms of the types of program that are going on, and that's where if, if it was appropriate or that is. You know, we would maybe appoint a, a, a subcommittee member or two, to aid Lucinda in helping to develop programming.
I mean, it might be, yeah, uh, I, I, I'm, I was kind of disjointed in my head, but I mean, just something as simple as having a group of people could show up in.
What?
Eighteen seventy two costumes and do Carolyn. I mean, you know, at one of the events, that, something like that would be a.
No, Bob, I, I might suggest that in terms of the items that we're suggesting here. Are really leveraging some of the work that we're doing, and we could align them to the two fifty celebration more broadly. So, um, that was my initial thinking when I said item E, though, I didn't know it was duplicated by the garden clubs. But item H, where there's this idea of doing a passports for this kids, again, would align with. What we're doing within the plot program, which includes developing a map and a walking tour and all of that. So it aligns that we could leverage the work we're doing and support it. Uh, the tornado performed, uh, uh, programming thing that we were talking about, that fits within what we're doing and it works well. So if we put forward those two or three, I think that fits and could be something we could easily support. Uh, the other things that, that are circulating here strike me as much broader than what the HPC on its own will, will support. But that's, that's kind of how I was looking at it, but maybe I got it wrong. Well, I think, um, I think that's helpful if there's stuff that's already been done that could be used and for implementation. Through, through Lucinda for developing these programs that makes her job a whole lot easier to do and it gives her some structure to at least to start with. Um, some of these other things on here, um, are, you know, uh, and I'm just going to just pick one. You know, like host, host a, uh, uh, we'll play a version of the Antiques Roadshow, again, special, special event. Um, it's related to history, it's related to the, to the culture of the, of the community with material culture coming in. Um, it's, it's something, wouldn't that be kind of with, with the commission? When you're looking at these things, would that be kind of cool, something the commission would, would say, hey, that'd be kind of cool to have?
Yeah, I would support it. Uh, staff is carrying it out. We would certainly support it.
For us to do it with that.
That's, that's why I'm struggling with, we support it. It's a. I'm not expecting, I'm not expecting the HPC to carry out any of this.
Right.
Okay, this, this is basically, this is.
They're just looking for our ideas.
Well, if, if the HPC is not going to do anything with this, then why should it be in our, as the major element or strategic plan?
Because, because we're putting it in there for two reasons. First to, to get the nod from the HPC that, yeah, these are all great ideas.
Oh, you're, okay.
And second, that the council can see what it is that the, 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 uh, HPC is nodding to. And for them to say, yeah, these are all great ideas, um, and get their feedback. Maybe there's, the council would like to see. One over the other or prioritize it a little bit more, and that's fine, but we're conveying to them what our intent is. Um, that is implemented by staff, um, with, with, uh, resources or whatever that we have. Um, and like I said, Stuart, that some of the programming that you've already started working on, great. And we can say these things are probably, are, are sort of, um, uh. We've indirectly started on some of this, and so we can do these types of programs.
Would it work for?
This is Jane Bobbs.
Going to county. She's on the commission.
But it's for.
Okay.
To come up with a primary list of what our priorities are. And then after that, put a secondary list of things which we would support. Would that work or not?
I think it's, I think it becomes too much information on, in, in providing so much stuff. I wanted to, was trying to narrow some of this stuff down.
So we're.
So that we have at least some concepts. I think, I think it's, it's appropriate that if, uh. Lucinda starts working on this stuff and going, no, I've got some problems with some of these for whatever reason are not going to work. Then I think having that in our hip pocket to say, here's some other things that we can do. So we, we could use some of that, but I don't want to hit, I don't want to hit the council with this list of things that the perception is, is that, oh my God. We're never going to get anything done other than this for next year. So I think having that sort of a secondary list of things are, is, is great to have, and we can put a little notation. If there's, you know, if there's other, other, uh, other, if some of these things cannot be done, we can't get two or three projects out of this done. Then we can certainly advise the council on, here's some other things that we want, we'd like to consider doing so that they're aware of it.
I, I, I guess, um, I wasn't clear on what I was saying. My thought was that we were looking at what the historic, uh, preservation. Goals were initially. And this is a goal, but it's not a primary goal.
Now.
Where you don't want a document that says what the historical preservation goals are.
The, the goals are, are what I've highlighted as, as one, two, three, four on here. The, that's, the La Play the Maryland two fifty program is the goal. The goal is we want to participate in this. Um, one way or the other, we're going to participate, we're going to have our own La Play the two fifty. Whether or not the state wants to sponsor us or not, this is what we're going to do. Uh, so that becomes the goal. So how are you implementing those goals? You're, you're creating at least two or three programs for twenty twenty six for that implementation.
So with respect to F. You have developed special patriotic banners to display throughout the town.
Uh huh.
And so I remember that there was a proposal a while back. I think it was relating to World War Two. People who had been in World War Two, members from the town. Um, and since this is Maryland two fifty, if we're going to do patriotic people or, uh, events. Focus those banners on people that have connections to people from La Plata or from La Plata's early history.
Yeah.
Because we don't have colonial history per se. I mean, we have Dr. Preick and. Basically, we're tobacco field.
Yeah, I mean, you could, I mean, you could, I think you could expand it out to, you know, recognize like Maryland signers. Um, or members of, that were, uh, members of the, uh, of the Maryland delegation, the Continental Congress. Um, there's things like that, that, um, uh, that you could do. So I, I don't think it has to be narrowly focused on, on just the plate itself.
Well, I think it should be though. I, I, I'd like to see it focused on La Plata as much as possible, just, just people who are connected to the town. Whose ancestors maybe were in the revolution or, or who were just local families who maybe aren't even in the plate anymore. But were part of the plate's early history that participated in.
If we have, if we have, yeah, I think that's, I think that's a, a great suggestion. If you, if we had, uh, if we had people that were. Uh, the plate obviously didn't exist as such, you know, at the, at the, the time of the revolution. But certainly Charles County and, and Southern Maryland did.
Yeah.
And so if we had, if we wanted to put up banners to. Folks that were, that were in the revolution from this area and identify their names and whatever. That certainly could be, be done with some research. Um, the, I'm sure the, uh, I don't know what Maryland's, uh, Maryland's records look like for the revolution. Uh, but.
Charles counties are great. We have all of our colonial records.
But yeah, it'd be perfect, and that, that certainly helps. I know, like, during research for different purposes, like Massachusetts, Connecticut. They have wonderful records of where these people enlisted, where they were from, their age, I mean, the whole bit. So you could kind of do something like that for Revolutionary War veterans that were in Charles County or.
There's a book, I mean, there, there's already a book out that, it's a local history book on, uh, Maryland, uh, Charles Countyans in the American Revolution. So the information's there, it's just a matter of putting up the banners.
Yeah, I think that's great.
I saw some banner program in, in some of the small towns with veterans of the, of the town. Specifically, I think there's an organization that does this, so, because I saw multiple towns, so there must be a way to go, go, go get this. And it'd be local residents who've served and given wars, and it highlights their service and.
When you go through a bridge bill, yeah.
Yeah, we should still do that regardless of.
Promoting that and trying to get businessmen's association to beat into it. But of course, the businessmen's association doesn't exist anymore, so.
There are some awesome stories. I already know a few, just Harry, Harry White Wilmer's, um. The, the American Legion Post, of the person named after, his story is amazing. And I know of people that in this area that were shot down and captured during World War Two and escaped. I mean, there's just all sorts of amazing stories that, that could be highlighted if we did that program or if we recommended that program. To be pursued in the town at some point.
Well, Jane, I mean, with your family, the Chapman family, I'm sure somebody goes back into the history of that, of being in the Revolutionary War. I mean, it was her family that gave the side of town, east side of town.
Yeah, the only, the, the criteria is that we'd have undocumented people that we can, that we could document that, that showed that they're, they participated.
We've got the daughters of the American Revolution, and you've got the daughters of the war of eighteen twelve as well, and they're, uh, very active locally, so shouldn't.
I, I, I don't see, I don't really see any, any real barriers other than doing some research.
Okay.
Um, okay.
Just as a point of order, do, do we have a hard stop at eleven?
I, I, um, I'm to your, uh, we don't have a hard stop, no.
Okay, because we're, we're, we're going, we're on a path to run over. I just want to.
I know, I, I thought, I thought we were here till eleven, I thought we were here till one, you said twelve.
Oh, whatever, I'm, I'm fine with that, okay. Okay, so are these, are, is there, is there anything else? And, and Jane, is there any other primary programming that's on here that you'd like to add?
You mean for number two?
For, for number two in terms of, uh, in terms of concepts that, that, that might be explored that the commission would. Would be cool if they could, if it could be done, that they would like to see, not that it's going to get done, uh, because of, of. For various reasons, money, staffing, or, or other barriers.
Jane, would you like an academy on your property, the Chapman property? I'm sure we can pull that off.
Well, I have.
The family would love it.
Well, you know, we have, I, I, one of the things I have on here, and I used to do this, but we do a Revolutionary War encampment. On there, you know, if there's a large piece of property to do that on.
Well, they used to do it at Smallwood State Park.
Uh, I think they still do small, the small society is still active.
That's revolutionary.
Yeah, that's Revolutionary War, general.
Because they have like the Brigade of the American Revolution, uh, the, the, um, continental line, uh, that. Uh, we would obviously need to contact them and, and schedule it and see if there's units in the area that would, that would come down.
Back in the sixties, we used to do the Rever- Revolutionary War days. At General Smallwood, um, retreat, and it was a three day event.
Really like a weekend type thing set up on Friday and then break down usually Sunday, uh, Sunday.
Yeah, how active that organization still is, I don't know, but I, uh.
They could highlight the Maryland five hundred, which were. That's a, um. Group of Marylanders that covered Washington's retreat from Saratoga, maybe. I forgot where it was.
Hmm.
Uh, but they were about to be encircled and they needed volunteers to step up and basically be slaughtered. And so the Marylanders stood up and still, and got slaughtered.
Yes. Maryland, actually, Maryland and Delaware had some of the most consistent, um, best, uh, uh. Uh, regiments in the war. Um, you, you look at their performance places like at, uh, at Camden or, uh, excuse me, at Cowpens. Um, and these guys were, these guys were, um, uh, were very resilient, very, uh, dependable. Regiments were Marylanders and, and the Delawares.
Yeah, they, um. They basically needed to stand there and take it while everybody else got away, and so they did. And that's, um, I know they're called the Maryland five hundred, but I can't remember the name of the battle. I used to remember it, now I just don't remember it.
So did we settle on something to put on the list here? Okay, so are, Jane, did you have anything else?
I, I think, right now, I think we're in keeping with, I think all of these, they're making sense.
Okay, all right, so then if this is cool, uh, I've added the, the one for the tornado.
What, what are you sending us to get?
We can move on.
That, that's good. Do, just give me a summary of what is it that we're going to put forward?
Okay, so the, the items that are listed, A through, A through I with the, uh, with the addition to. Um, the development for programming with a town, that, with a town exhibit for remembrance of the nineteen twenty six La Plata tornado. And so the ones that we can proffer as, as, um, conceptual ideas to do. To try to accomplish, you know, a two or three of these with this send us help.
Are you adding the recommendations we're having to the existing ones about how we'd like to see those done? For example, I mean, we just, we just had the discussion about F and focusing on the La Plata or Charles County connected people.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's sort of diving down. I think further we need to go, we can, what I help, how I'm sort of envisioning this as we're talking. Is that we bring Lucinda in and we can sit down with the more specifics of the things that she feels is viable to do.
So they're still. I don't think all these items are things that the HPC can.
Oh, we're not.
We're, we're not going to do any of them. I mean, they're, we're just breaking.
No, but I, but I don't, so I don't understand again, I, I, I'm sorry I keep doing this, but I, I can't understand again the purpose of this list. And what we are saying as an HPC about it. There are a few things we've talked about that are good ideas. The, the item J fits very nicely. Um, but are, are we, are we suggesting that we're going to recommend all these things?
These are all things that, that we think are great ideas and will support them in some manner if asked.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, that's basically how I see it. I mean, we're not carrying them out, we're just supporting them. Based on what the town feels the events they want to. Town feels the events they want to carry.
Okay, so pick one. I don't care which one, but how do you envision that somebody's going to come to us and say, support us? Nobody's coming to, to, we're, nobody's going to do that. We're bringing some, we're bringing programming ideas of what we, of what the, to the council of things that could potentially be done as part of the two fifty, because they're going to say, well, what are you going to do? And then I'm going to say, well, here's some ideas that the, that the HPC likes, that we've written down, and it provides.
If if you're looking for things the HPC likes, I don't know that we're ready to endorse. These are all the things, we like all these items, A through J, and we should, we're ready to help and make them go. Whatever role that might be, because we, we, we've not done anything related to a La Plata antique roadshow, but it might be fun.
They want to pull that off and we.
This would be the list of what we would be recommending as a commission that the town look into doing. As, and although we didn't recommend it as a commission because it came out of Don for the most part.
But that's not the point. That's, I don't, I don't.
At some point in the future, we would be in the position of creating this list. Our role will be to create the list, send it over to the town. Here's what we hope you guys would like.
This is the list.
We don't have to create it. It's already. We just have to endorse it.
So if somebody turns around and picks any of these items on the list and says, oh, the HPC wants, is recommending these, let's, the HPC go do them.
They're not expecting us to do them.
Then what? Then again, then again, I'm sorry, but why is the H, why is the two fifty program a strategic imperative for the HPC?
To me, it is.
Because you're providing, you're, you're doing a few things. You're, you're participating, you're recognizing the Maryland two fifty, and you're participating in the program, okay? Participation in a state or national program, because it's the US two fifty. You're promoting economic development through programming and and new opportunities, right? And so you're, and then you're also executing one of your, one of the, the provisions for the, the jobs of the HPC is to facilitate history and remembrance and and all those things that relate to La Plata or is tactically related to that, okay? And so you have to have something when, when I go to the council and say, hey, they want to participate in the Maryland two fifty, council go, great. So what are you going to do? So we need to have.
Lucinda, as an events coordinator.
These are ideas that, that the commission thinks would be, would work wonderfully for a Maryland two fifty program. We have the events coordinator who's, who's going to help facilitate this. We will, and as time goes on, I would, I envision having Lucinda and myself work with, you know, with a subcommittee member or come back to the commission and say, hey, we're having, we're, here's where we're at with these, with these types of ideas, and sort of refine them and start working towards some very specific projects on here to provide some general guidance.
I think we're more than happy to go along with recommendations and help her to facilitate them. I, I, I agree. I see what you're seeing in the overall picture of five years. What, why is this part of this agenda for us? It should be under.
When is something being taken forward to the council to say, the town needs to participate in a Maryland two fifty program in some manner? And, and get the council to establish that such an event is important, and they're going to put somebody in charge of it. When is that going to happen? Because until that happens, for us to stand up and say, we support the La Plata two fifty program, but there isn't one.
We're basically establishing the council as, as providing, they're, they're anointing the establishment of a Maryland two fifty program for La Plata with, with, look, exploring ideas from this list based on, and staff is going to vis a vis myself slash Lucinda really to implement a couple, two or three of these ideas.
Okay, well, if that's, if that's what's going forward and, and we're going to play a supporting role as, if somebody comes to us, then, okay. Do that, but I.
Our fingerprint on something that's already been done is all we're doing at this stage. But I, I kind of, to your point, I see what you're saying, that if, if this was, if Maryland two fifty was an idea that was, was, was going to happen, council oblivious, didn't care, didn't want to pull with it. Would the HPC be the one, would it be our role to recommend to the council that you look into Maryland two fifty and you follow what they do and we, we suggest you do these things? I think that's what our role should be, but because we are not there yet, this has kind of happened back.
Yeah, you're right. It's sort of, I think that's, I think that's well said. So but part of your job responsibility is to make recommendations and to promote history in the town, generally speaking. And so you're bringing it to the council's attention before it's too late to do anything, right? And so the, the, when it goes to the council, the council could say, oh, yeah, the Maryland two fifty, I hadn't thought about that. Um, these, the, the folks on council, you know, are as new as I am, right? And it's just, they may have not thought about it or not even know it's out there. At the end of the day, they might say, you know what? Great idea, but, you know, we don't want to do it.
So as you say, they've got the, the part before the horse, because they needs to approve it and then come back to us and say, you know.
Will you support it? Yeah.
What, what are your feelings?
Well, actually, no, it'd be the other way around, I would think. We would, we would go to the council and say, hey, there's this thing called Maryland two fifty. Here's some things we would like to see done in the context of Maryland two fifty, if the town will do these things. And then the council comes back and says, okay, yeah, we'll, we'll do some of this stuff. In this case, though, it seems like, if I'm hearing you right, the council's already on board with going on with Maryland two fifty. They're not.
It hasn't been brought to them, and that's why.
Well, that goes back to Rich's point then.
Is it the events coordinator for the town?
Here's what's going to happen. We're going to get through this. It's where we are today. We're going to get through this. And then, and then if we want to have one further look at it with a revised draft for the next meeting, can do that. It's going to, staff is going to, is going to move it forward to the, to the council and put it on as an agenda item for discussion with the council. And that's where staff is going to engage with the council. Probably invite the, the chair, vice chair, both to provide any additional input or answer questions that the council may have to have them endorse a fiber work plan.
So this, this is actually originated with staff. Okay, that's where Rich, I see what Rich's point is now, that, that. We did, we didn't bring this forward, but we're putting our fingerprint on it, saying, okay, yes, we're, we're.
You're doing this part of, it's part of a work plan that we don't have. There's certainly nothing that's been endorsed by council in writing.
I didn't feel it should be under our work plan. I felt it should be under the work plan of the events coordinator.
Yeah, see, she's not.
No, so she's not going to take this off.
She's, she would, she has told me that she has some capacity to help do this.
Support us.
To support this. I presented this to, I presented this to the town manager. The town manager agrees that it's something that Lucinda could, could help participate with. So there's alignment there. So we're bringing this as part of, again, I'm trying to provide the, the commission with things that they can put the, under their banner of, here's what we've done this, for this year, this fiscal year. We've, 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 we established a Maryland two fifty program. We're establishing it through, with the council's blessing, with, with these, with these types of activities potentially.
You're looking for HPC to establish a Maryland two fifty program.
You're establishing your work, I mean, spoke out of, out of turn. You're establishing ideas for a Maryland two fifty program. The council has to bless all of this. And they may say, we don't want to do the two fifty program. Okay. Or maybe the council might say, hey, you know what? We don't want to, we don't want the, the, the HPC to, to do this. We want to, we want to do a Maryland two fifty program, but they may have other ideas on how they want to actually implement it, if they want to implement it.
So if we were, if we were to put in this little paragraph two here, and it said, HPC, an HPC subcommittee could be organized to plan two or three special events, activities at town to support town staff if a Maryland, if a La Plata Maryland two fifty program is established.
We can put some language in there that, that suggests that if the council is supportive of establishing Maryland two fifty program, here's how it would fit within your work plan.
Yeah, in other words, don't look at us to establish a Maryland two fifty plan. That's not our program. That's all we're doing. But we're happy to support one if the town sets one up.
Okay, that's.
Put the rate, the wording in there, I think.
It'll be, there'll be a staff report, and it'll, it'll accompany us, it'll say that, yeah.
Yeah, because it sounds like, it, it sounds like we're recommending Maryland two fifty when honestly we're not.
It's not one of our priorities.
Right, that's, that's the better way to put it. It's not one of our priorities. And.
You're establishing, right, this, the work plan provides establishment of priorities and things that you want to do that the council would have to bless to do. Okay. So that's, that's twenty twenty-six. Now, oh, excuse me, the last one on there was, was establishing a professional preservation list of, of a variety of different preservation professionals, consultants. And that, and what I envisioned for this is to be able to do that research, put together a list of resources that are out there for La Plata residents if they choose to follow the, the secret, want to follow Secretary Interior standards or guidelines, or they're looking for expertise with, with historic preservation work that they would have done to their property, to their buildings. The, the town has provided a list of, of people that they might reach out to. We, I never recommend that, that any community recommend anybody. We're simply providing a list for informational purposes, but we can certainly, we can certainly vet out folks to as far as what their qualifications might be. But we're, you're providing a list for basically for people to go, hey, I want to, I want to do this addition in my house, but you know, I'm not sure who to go to. It's, it's, it's an old house, or maybe it's a historic house. Maybe there's, maybe that you have, you've got nine properties that are codified that are local historic resources. Somebody wants to do something with that, with their property. This list might be a great first start for them to reach out to begin that discussion because a certificate of appropriance would ultimately be required to be approved by the HPC.
So the only question I have is, we create this list, but there's nothing behind it that suggests that anybody would even look for or use it. I mean, some of the things that you just rattled off, we're not doing. So we don't have a list of houses that need to comply with this. We don't, now we should get one, and we talk about that later. But we don't have anything that suggests that somebody would even directed to look for this. So what, what's the behind the, what's, what's?
You're providing, you're providing a public service for people that have properties that are, are, they may have historic properties or they may have vintage properties, and they want, they want to, they want to, they want to, to use Secretary Interior standards and guidelines. And so you're providing an opportunity for somebody to provide, as a public service, resources that are out there that somebody might check on.
And that list is probably already out there, so we won't.
Hard of a list to do, or a hard lift to make. And so that's why I picked this in as a first year.
It's, it's an interesting first year. I, I don't even have any, any objection to the idea of having such a list. But it makes absolutely no sense to me as it's a strategic imperative.
Would somebody actually come to the town and say, can you give me a list? And the town would hand out, give them that list?
Have that list, or it can get downloaded online, because it's something I would want to add to the website.
Sounds more like a link on a website to me.
That's, that's all it is.
How is this a strategic imperative for this historic preservation? Did you have it as the, one of the very first things we should focus on?
I, I, I think it's because John wants to show that we, as a commission, have some stake into this.
Well, we're establishing, that we're establishing our presence as a commission towards providing these resources to people in the town on behalf of La Plata.
You have to, you're, you're building up based on budget, timing, staff resources.
Well, it's one thing to list, create a list of easy things to do within resources. And it's a different thing to list, what are our strategic imperatives and what do we think is important? And they're two different things. So which is that we're doing? Or we can come up with a list of, hey, here's six things we can do quickly. Let's do those. Well, that's not a strategic plan.
This is the strategic plan of what you're, of what you're telling the council that you want to do over the next five years.
In our, I will tell you that out of the three thousand dollars that was appropriated to the town this year, I don't want to spend a nickel on this. Not five cents.
You're not, you're not going to.
Well, where's it coming from?
Well, it's going to, that's.
Somebody's got to pay for it.
That's, no, nobody's has to pay for it. That's going to come out of a combination of, of staff doing the research.
So staff is going to spend money, even if it's just salary, to go do this?
Yeah, because that's not an unusual thing.
But we can't get anybody to put a fucking air conditioner, we're on the record, I apologize. We can't get somebody to put a busted air conditioner replacement in this caboose. That's why we went, did it. But we're going to create a list that nobody needs or wants.
Okay. Look, I, I'm, Rich, I'm, I'm providing you staff coaching and suggestions. If you want to blow this whole thing out of the water, fine. I'm still going to take this to the commission, to the council and get their input on it. So.
Okay, are you, what are you taking forward?
I want to get your, I want to get the, the commission's input on this document, because the commission needs to have a work plan. Because right now, from what I've seen, the, in what's happened in the past, there's been, there's been this, this lack of direction in terms of where things are at, and there hasn't been specific as far as I can see.
With all the respect, I disagree with you.
There, there's no documentation for, for a work plan. And this is going to help, it's going to help staff, it's going to help the commission, it's going to help the council understand where, what the commission is doing, where we're going.
Why can't we go back to what we, the, the five things that we as a commission felt were, were important to us? Why can't we go back to that?
Why can't we put those first?
Okay, I'll tell you that, and I'm just picking one out here, the, the historic resource survey that you want to do, way more than for three thousand dollars. You, you have no budget for that, and that's a much more complicated, complex. Do, I've, I've done two or three of these.
That's the survey I'm talking about, that the Maryland Historic Trust says we have to have.
No, you, you don't have to have it.
But it's, it's script.
It, it's, you, one of the, one of the basic.
We have wanted this all along, but we can't get one as. Ago, or three days ago, whenever we had. The mayor was talking with me then, and she was saying, you know, we've really got to get this historic district established. Well, here we have all this paperwork. It says we have a historic district, yet y'all are saying we don't have a historic district. And there was a survey done, and now we need a new survey. And, you know, we're just spinning our wheels. Why can't we get the council to approve of a survey so we can establish a historic district?
And why does it come out of our budget?
Well, what's the budget? If, if, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
So to, to, you know, to answer those questions, there's, there was a, apparently there was some survey done for, in the town, what was it, ten years ago? Fifteen, twenty years ago, something like that.
Actually, two attempts, but one, the official one was around two thousand.
So, so there was a, there was initial, there was initial context statement and development for, for the survey that, that resulted in a, in a nomination.
Well, why do we have to start all over again?
Well, because of the, okay, so.
That's what we don't understand.
Okay, so it's very simple, that, that document was done twenty, twenty-five years ago, whatever that was. It's, at this point, at this point, and, and I know you've told me, um, Mary Beth, that. There's been a lot of changes in that area in terms of houses or buildings that have been added to, demolished. There's been new buildings lost, so that survey is out of date at this point. Um, i- if you sent that, if you sent that to the state, um, they would, they would have all kind of questions on it.
Why can't we get a new survey?
And, and that's what this would be.
Yeah, that's.
Would be, would be, yes, and that's what, that's what I'm recommending to, to have done. So it needs to be resurveyed, but there's, there's, there's also value in. Doing a, one comprehensive citywide survey, cause there's, you know, there's the.
Yes, but why can't we have that done?
Doing that. I, I wanna do it. And so what my recommendation is, is that I'd like to do this survey closer to the, to the comp plan. The council can, the, the council can budget for it.
But the comp plan isn't due again for another several years.
It will be, it will, I will start it in twenty-eight, and where I had it on here was twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
I mean, we've been trying to accomplish this for twenty-five years, and it hasn't happened yet.
I can accomplish it. I just need counsel.
Putting off at least another three years till we write the comprehensive plan, which won't take effect till.
You're, here's, here's how that works. So you do this, you, the, the comprehensive plan is your high-level document, right? That identifies the, how the town wants to, wants to grow, right, okay. So, the, doing historic resource survey before you implement, before you start looking at doing a uh comprehensive plan update. The timing becomes really important because you have all this great new information that comes in. You can use that comp plan to help implement policies to, you know, to move forward. Let's, we, imagine this. You have historic resource survey, it's done, it identifies, and I'm making up numbers, fifty buildings. And two districts that potentially could exist based on survey. It'd be great to have that in the comp plan at that time where there's synergy that's going on. After the survey is done, or um, with the comp plan to add information in there that says. One of the goals in a comp plan is to um, is to facilitate um, uh, uh, I, uh. The, uh, uh, implementation. Um, and uh, uh, adoption of, or of, of two local historic districts. That have been deemed eligible for landmark designation um, at the state or national level, or the town can adopt it locally as well. Um, but you're, you wanna have, I found that when you have documents like this that. Um, that are new and fresh, people remember them going into a comp plan update as opposed to doing them from a few years ago. And you have, so, and you theoretically are gonna have the same people that are gonna be on the, the commission and the council. Cause the council's blessed it, and they're gonna know what's, what is coming out of the survey, it's gonna be on the forefront of their mind. And probably gonna be a more of a, of a, perhaps a bigger priority uh, for them. And so you, you try to time some of this stuff. So that it, it flows really well.
I can understand that. Twenty-five years is a long time that we've been trying to get this off the ground.
That's why we put it on high on list, and you had it high on list soon.
But I don't have.
How many more months will that, it's not you personally, I mean, down, I, I get that, but um.
But I don't, I, this, at this moment in time, I don't have, I, I don't have the resources that, that the town needs to. I know what to do, I know how to do it, I've done it before. I know, I know what needs to, how, how to get this thing set up. Um, I need to, uh, we don't have any budget for this.
Right.
And so I wanna be able to bring this as an item to the, to the council next year as part of our budget. It'll give me a little time to do some research.
I understand that you are the messenger here, and I, I get that completely. But the other night, the mayor was saying to me. Based on something that has happened on Washington Avenue, has to do with solar. And she's saying, you know, we've got to get this historic district, we've got to save Washington Avenue. I'm like, well, we've been trying to do that for years, but nobody's listening, nobody's supporting us.
So you may have an opportunity to raise this in front of the council, and. If, if they see it as a high priority as all the rest of us seem to see it as a high priority, maybe it will actually support it.
Then, and that's what we'll have to have that discussion about it, and that's where. The town manager has to say, remind the commission of what their priorities are, what, what do they want done, when, how? Uh, what can staff do? And so, this, this work plan provide, feeds into council priorities ultimately. And so, and, and so if the, if the council says, hey, uh. We wanna prioritize the historic resource survey over water allocation. And they tell Chuck, that's what we want done. Okay, well Chuck's gonna do that, and he's gonna say, okay, Don, um, let's get, let's, let's make this roll, I'll make it roll. Um, but I don't think we're there, and to, to try to roll that into a first-year program, I don't think it's realistic.
Could it be bumped up to twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Well, that's, that's, it, and that's something that, again, the council, if they say, hey, I'd like to prioritize this first and do it, yes, absolutely. I'm just providing, again, I'm trying to provide some, some things that we can work up to. That provide some wins that I think is, can be done. I think that there's, uh, there's apparently some infrastructure. Um, for like the oral history program that I had suggested for the twenty-six, twenty-seven year to do. Um, so that we're ramping up, you're, you're giving me time to try to build a staff uh, that's here, you're providing. Um, the, the ability to prepare for some of these things. Historic resource survey, it takes time to build up to, to, to get there, to actually start doing the work, and then there's work you do after it. Um, and so, you know, I, I haven't been here, I'm my, I'm only in my fourth month, right? So there's, there's so much I can, there's only so much of Don I can give.
Welcome to the planet.
Yeah, basically, but I, but I, but I'm living it every day, so I gotta tell you, I was in a meeting here with another, with a developer who's, who's, who's grinding me on stuff too, and that's important to them. So I've got a lot of competing priorities that, um, I'm trying to balance these as much as I can from what I can do and what I can see.
Yeah.
So what I.
So that's where I have it. If the council wants to move this up, and, and that's fine. I honestly have no problem. Saying, here's what the, here's what the commission wants to do, this is what's important to the commission.
Well, that's where we really are. That's exactly.
Where we are.
The issue, I think you said it kind of in passing with what you were just saying, is that. This was designed with the priority of the council in mind.
No.
And.
No.
Or at least, how, how you've got to be able to ramp up to work with.
No, Don was trying to help us get well organized.
Yes, yes, I, I didn't mean to sound like that, that this, but where I'm going with it is that. It, it, it isn't necessarily reflective of the priorities that we, that we felt. And if there's any way we can push it a little further in that direction without completely trashing what you're trying to do, we'd like to do it.
I, I, and I fully understand that, and, and that's where the council's gonna have to weigh in and, and say that this is what. Um, I, cause, trust me, I, I'm on yours, I'm on your, I'm on your side, I really am.
I'm telling you, the council doesn't even know, I'm sure, what a plaque program is. They don't even know what we've done over the past five years.
Yeah, and some of this, when this moves forward to the council, they're, they're gonna become more.
How many of them have ever been in the uh, train station museum, you know, probably though. They don't, they have, don't have a clue what we've accomplished in five or six years.
Uh, Paul and Patrick.
Yeah, good.
They're, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, because we have accomplished a lot in our six, seven years. And they need to understand that, that, you know, we've stuck with it, we've got, and we've, this is what we have done. Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
So as not to make your life even harder. If we were to push or recommend or do whatever, whatever minor influence we have as a commission. To try to get that survey pushed up a little closer to current, I mean, well, at least maybe bump it up to the, uh, uh, an earlier fiscal year than where it sits right now. How much does that wreck your world?
Well, well, again, it, it, it really comes down to council priorities, and then it, it's. Um, and then the town manager has to um, make some, uh, make some, uh, give the council the. Uh, kind of the, the wherewithal in terms of what we're currently working on, what's, and balance that, and. So the council knows that we have these other priorities, and they're all competing with each other.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And if the, if the, the council says, hey, we wanna put the historic resource survey and start it this year, okay, great. Um, but council, you need to be aware that, um, that's gonna take time away from Don working on allo, on water allocation issues. The, the litany of subdivisions that we have going on there right now, um, and.
Bring that up.
And, well, no, I have to, it's, that's the reality, it's about the world I live in every day, right?
Draw the town lines, it'd be so much easier.
And so the council has to make, has to recognize and identify that. Um, but the, the council can direct staff, can direct the town manager to do anything they want. Town manager has a responsibility to be, as I am with you, trying to be, um, to be realistic and say, here's, here's where we're at with it. Um, and then, and for the council to ultimately make that decision of where they want things slotted in to work. Um, and like I said, I have no problem bringing these things up and saying, hey, the, the HPC. Uh, presumably the HPC likes this document, uh, we haven't finished it. But uh, they wanna slot these things up at a, at a, in a, in a higher timeframe. Um, I'm perfectly happy carrying that message, but I also carry the message to the council. About what do I think we can realistically do and what we can't do, and the, the town manager is certainly gonna supplement that.
So then it comes down to really the council having to make the hard choices to which way they wanna go with it.
Absolutely.
I'm content with that. I'm content with putting it on their lap and letting them do it.
But I think this is a, a great.
But in the meantime, we're just seeing nothing but growth, 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 but nothing's being done. To preserve the history of our town.
Yeah.
I completely agree with you. We're losing it so fast.
It just seemed like, they were so happy with us with the train station museum, but then it seemed like they wanted us to stay in that little. Pocket and niche, and not go anyplace else. Well, that's not what we're about.
And see, we've been doing.
Serving the town.
And see, and that's where the, that's where the, that's why I think it's really important to have a work plan, because then it's.
And we're trying to have a work plan.
No, that, that much I'm on board with.
And, and this is, this is part of that, making that sausage, if you will, is that you're, you're proactively bringing a work plan to them. You know, and you're saying, here's where I'd like to be with the work plan. And then the council is going to make the determination of things they like or don't like, or what they wanna shift around. Or they may say, hey, go back and work on, we want you to consider this. But it, at least it initiates the discussion that I think that has been paralyzed. Um, over the course of time, that there's a disconnect between what the council wants and what the commission's doing, or vice versa.
I'll be honest, there hasn't been a sense of disconnect between the council and what we've been doing until about two months ago.
Okay.
The closest we got to that was, was what was going on with the.
Just didn't care, whatever we wanted to do, they just let us do, and.
They were very supportive.
Stay, stay in your little niche, they were very supportive of the train station museum, yes, and the firemen's museum.
Yep, and the plaque program.
And the plaque.
We bumped into it with the houses on Washington Avenue. We bumped very much into a conflict between what our priority.
Trying to save those houses, and.
And, and that's, and I, and I think that with having a new, fundamentally, you have four out of five new council members.
And they don't really get it, probably about the history of the town. I don't even know what their.
And, and that's part of my.
Their connection to the town is.
Yeah, and, and part of my responsibility is to explain the, the appropriateness of the work plan. Um, they'll probably ask me about each of the items on there, and to explain to them how this benefits the town. How it is consistent with your job duties, responsibilities that are codified. Um, so it's, it's bringing awareness to them, uh, but also providing, again, as I, I've said, it's. It's providing an opportunity for budgeting for particular activities that you know that can get done. Got with, you, you've, um, uh, you've got um, staff leadership that I don't know if you really had or not. Um, I would put my qualifications in terms of leading this commission above most people.
Absolutely, I agree.
So, I can, I, I certainly know how these programs work. Uh, where there, there are opportunities, where there's pitfalls, to try to give the, the, the council a sense of what's possible, what can be done. And to, and as I wanna see, I wanna see the HPC get some recognized wins on this. And where we can have, you know, these, you know, the, the grand openings, or we can bring these to council and say, commission's done with this. Um, here's what we learned from this, here's how the town's gonna benefit from this. Those are great. They're, they're great opportunities for the HPC to, HPC to shine, as well as the, for the council to help the community, look what we've accomplished.
And we have lost so much over the past.
Yeah.
Decades.
And we're gonna lose more.
And it's, it's gonna continue.
And it's gonna happen so fast.
Tear it down, they're gonna.
Why we're trying to bump this up a little bit, because we thought we had. What we needed to be able to protect some of it, and we're finding out that we, what we have is an empty shell.
Mm-hmm.
The, and, and the, the, the resource survey completely agree. That it has to be, that really becomes your, in, to some degree. It, it becomes for the HPC's purposes, it becomes like a, your own personal comp plan, right? Because you've identified the resources that are there, and you have ability then to do a lot of different things with it. And this is what I'm talking about, click, connecting the dots. You can then look as part of that. As part of that survey, you know, what resources are, are your most endangered, based on development, right? How do we look about going about developing policies, maybe changing the ordinance with, with the council's blessing? On how we protect our resources? How do we proactively uh, protect resources? You know, and that can be by codifying things that require, um, you know, like, things like right now, that I don't have the ordinance. Are things that require maybe a monitor when you're next to a historic resource. Um, there may be material culture that's there, that you'd wanna have a monitor, have an archaeological, um, uh, do a phase one. To see if there's things that are worthy of preservation, or, or removal if necessary, or at least document what's there. Um, and I, at, at this point, I don't have that authority to, to require a developer to do that. Um, and these are things that would help come out of historic resource survey, that we can start using that to. Um, to expand upon it and, and start connecting dots to other needs based on, based on knowledge of what we know is there. Um, the, you know, later on, as I've indicated in here, is doing the, is looking at doing certified local government. It, it provides.
It's a good idea.
Which I think, I, I think it's, uh, uh, it's something that every community can do, not all of them are into it.
And that's part of the reason this landed on high on list, because it's a building block to getting that.
It, it is, but it's, it comes down to media priorities and budgeting.
Well, so it, it's, it's a funny thing to say that, because the concern that over the two houses, evidently, and the idea of preserving, you know what that all came down to? Priorities and money, it all did, and, and if you have a survey like this, it says, you know, these houses are on the list, don't you wanna save it? Because all they did was they said, oh, well, county's gonna deal with it.
They are on.
Nobody dealt with it, they're gonna wreck them. So, so that, that to me, that says, yeah, the priority for this. Getting a comprehensive resource survey updated or done, or whatever we need to do, becomes a pretty high item on the list of things too.
It, it, it is, and again, that's in.
So we are in agreement.
If, if the, if the council wants to bump that up, then.
Oh, not about it.
Well, it's just another thing to say.
So. So your, your, your intent is to forward the list as you've got, as you have.
I will forward, I will forward my, my list, but I wanna forward and represent your list as well. Um, and so that the, the council has the ability to.
Because.
To, to see where, to see where the commission is, what staff is recommending, and provide some direction. They may come back and say, yeah, we like this, we like to do this, a staff go back and reprioritize this. Um, okay, cool. Um, they may say, we want the, the HPC to consider this, they might wanna remove that. Um, off the, off this list, but it's, this is a place to start.
Because I, I would tell you that there are some things on the list. They're good ideas, but they, they've pretty low priority. Preservation professional list is a very low priority. I don't see how that's. Critical to all the things we've been talking about. It's, it's a good thing to do.
It is a good thing to do, but it's not.
Not number three.
No, it's, is, is it as important as, as doing a survey? Of course not.
I think Don's purpose was to see what he thought we could easily do in one year.
Yeah, that's, that's like a low cost, low hanging.
I want to be able to report back to the town manager of the council, here's what we're able to accomplish in twenty six. Again, I don't want to write checks that the, that we, that council aren't going to be able to cash, right? I can promise them the world for twenty six, but realistically, I, I, they can't be done. I don't have the staffing or the money to do it.
Well, okay, all right. I don't know what, what, what you want to do with this. You're going to put forward what you want to do. Well, you're not asking us, you, you've got our input. I don't know where this, where we're going from here.
Okay, so if.
I want to help. I want to do this and you, you could tell that we all feel strongly about it.
So tells us what they want, what their priorities are.
But I'm not sure that.
We can't go anywhere.
If, okay, so I, I guess the takeaway for, for me is. Um, do you, do you like the, do you like the items and the ideas on this list? Uh, or is there anything you want to take off um, and say, nope, don't want to do that? Or is there something else that you want to put on here um, that I haven't considered or we haven't talked about?
No, I have no objection to the list. I just have.
That's fine.
All of these are possible doable things, uh, but uh, let's get our priorities straight.
And some of them are already doing, so you can just do them. You know, you, you, your legacy business program. And coming up for those criteria, we're in the middle of trying to do that. And within the plaque effort to decide which ones are. This is, this is easily done and should be at the top of the list. Could be higher. But it's not. And it, you know, you have it down, we'll do it two years from now. It, it, and I don't know what. You know, aside from somebody from town staff suggesting that we create the list, I don't know what resources you're worried about.
I'm worried about staffing. I'm worrying about budget.
But I, I get all that. But what staffing and budget is required to set up the legacy business program criteria? What, what?
That, that's, that's going to require some staff time.
What staff time to do what?
To, to develop the program. Okay, and the program, the way this would work is, as it does in other communities. Is that uh, you, again, we have a, we have a, we have a, a, a. A work item to do.
But I, I think you're already doing some of this work for you and, and do it in this, in this, in. Our context of what you're talking about here, I think we could do it.
I, I'm, I'm providing, what staff is doing is providing its professional expertise to present you with, with a product.
Okay.
Okay, if, if you have things that can contribute to staff's development of that product, then fantastic. I'd love to have it. But ultimately, what would happen is that we would provide, we would, we would set up for the legacy business program. We would set up a, the, a program concept for you to review. Provide your recommendations or endorsements of, um, of what the program would be, right? And then with that, um, I would expect the council would want to see that and endorse it before it's implemented. But having it on a work plan so that they know that this is something that they have blessed. Um, as that they will see in the future, provides, provides everybody here with, and particularly staff. The knowledge that this is something that's been, that's been endorsed to do. And then we can, we can go into our professional, uh, do our professional thing to bring. For a, a, the version of each of these products, like the legacy program forward to the commission. To comment on, to make changes to as, as they, as they want. Um, and to develop something to fruition so that we can bring it for council for endorsement and now we've got a program to implement.
I guess the one thing I would, would ask, you're going to do this and you want to put the list forward, you have it. I would ask that you. Put now item number four up into starting in the twenty five, twenty six, it's not going to finish in twenty five.
Do you want, okay, so you want the firehouse where?
In this year's plan, not next year.
Okay.
And so that we could start, we've talked about a two-phase thing, the realist, if we can do within current resources. Okay, you can, you can replace, uh. You know, the, the preservation professional list with that, if you want, if you don't want to have too many things up there.
Swap them.
But, and, and, and to be honest, your oral history program, we're already engaged in trying to develop some of that. So can, do you want to do it or not? Uh, it's, in a lot of ways, you're putting the brakes on things that we're already doing. And so I'm trying to understand, when you time phase it the way you have, are you really looking for us to stop? Our, our, our research into the developing oral history.
You can continue to do it. Um, if you're doing that, if you're doing that serve on your own. That's fine, but officially, this is where these would be placed, wherever the council ends up with it. But we wouldn't spending, we wouldn't be spending, we wouldn't be spending time on non-priority or non-work items unless it was. It was something just informational item. Here's what, you know, McDonald's, whatever.
The College of Southern Maryland did a pretty extensive oral history process around the centennial year. Um, and that's on file and it's, it's like a hundred files or something like, it's a lot. That it should, I mean, whoever, whenever this comes up to be worked on, that should be made aware to them because it, the, the route's already there.
Yeah, it's, it's really establishing, with that really is, is establishing structure, time, methodology. Of how this stuff's going to be done.
They, they may be able to use what the college already did.
And, and maybe it's already there in place and fantastic. That makes, that makes our life really easy to do.
Yeah, I think you're staying in the old Newcombe house, right?
Who's the manager? He's in that house, okay. Cause she's one of the ones that was doing the oral history, uh, interviews.
It's interesting, this whole thing was written like, uh, Kenny Newcombe, lives in the Newcombe house. That's all, put together by her. Very interesting, most interesting about the town.
I don't think I've seen that picture. No, with those gates. That's very nice. I've seen the history. I, I don't think I remember seeing the picture of the courthouse though. I don't, that's a nice picture of that courthouse.
I was just reading Heritage Green and what that was supposed to be. Look what we have today.
Yes. Isn't that great how you can approve one thing and how completely different you get when they finally deliver it to you? You go to a referendum and you say, yeah, I want that. And then what you get is not what you, what you approve. How the heck did that happen?
Developers have always been in it.
So can I, uh, just question one thing? When you go before the council. You will present this as. What you came up. With as the priorities for us. And you will also. Present to them that from our standpoint, these are the things we see as a priority. And they will take those two things into consideration. Okay, I, I just, I, I just want to be clear.
It's, it's not, it, it's not, and, and trust me when I tell you this, it's not. I, I'm not, I, I'm not presenting it as, as, uh, as, you know, this is the only list. Don't, don't listen to what the HPC says. I, I want your input. That's why we're having this. Um, but there's, there's some, there's some misalignment in the things that. Uh, from my perspective, um, I, but I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not the end all be all either. I don't tend to be. Um, but I want the commission, the council to, uh, to understand what some of the ideas are that are, that are in this document. Um, and I want the commission, the council to understand what the, the HPC feels is higher priority, uh, that they do. Um, and they, I expect the town council is going to say, well, Mr. Dooley, why can't, um. What do you think of this? And I'm going to tell them that, well, based on like doing the historic resource survey. Um, I don't think the time to try to do that right now is, is the appropriate time. To do that, I'm going to be, I'm going to absolutely be fair about it as a professional. Um, but I want to be, I want to represent, um, where I think we're at, you know, with the commissions. Where the, the commission's at with it, so that they can make an informed decision on how they want to move forward with it. But the goal is, is to try to get us, again, get us all on the same page, work up based on what we can accomplish this year. Uh, be able to start developing, um, uh, more sophisticated work plan items like the survey. Doing, um, uh, um, other things in the future, doing a CLG thing, because that's a whole other process. Um, updating or conducting or historic resource ordinance and some of those things that are later on down the road. So that we can start developing some wins, start getting some, something we can show the council that, hey. We're able to do this. We're going to be able to do a lot more if, but we need budget for this. Uh, to be able to do it, but here's, here's what we have planned to do with your blessings so that. When we start working on these things actively, these work plan items are going to carry through. Um, in the future and nobody can say, well, that, I don't remember that. Well, here's what's on our work plan.
Okay.
All right. So if, if everything's okay then with where we're at, we're at right now, I will. I will let the town manager know, um, you'll need to vote on this to, that, uh, um, whether this is. That you've, that you've reviewed it, um, and that you, these are your recommendations in here. Or modification, and I will, I will bring that, uh, to the council, data uncertain right now. Um, but that will be brought to the council in the near term. Until then, you know, if there are HPC meetings, you know, we just, we kind of carry on with what we're doing right now.
I'm not sure where we're going to go at this point. We're kind of adrift at the moment.
And that's why, well, I would.
Meeting will have something from the council.
I would, um, maybe, maybe not. So what you can tell them is that, uh.
Paul and I have been working on, Paul Goodberg and I have been working on getting a presentation to the council relative to the. Firehouse and, and where we're going with that.
Well.
Uh, he wants discussion relative to the budget because, uh, he didn't think there was much granularity in the, in our submission. I'll tell you that the budget that actually came out has even less granularity and takes most of the money away. So I don't know why they did what they did, but they probably are trying to get to some top line and they just cut everybody. And then, um, uh, really need to know where we are on the funding from the, from the, uh. Uh, the grant money, if it's, if it's alive or not. It's amazing to me how many times people have said, I'm going to go find the answer to that and. Knows the answer. Right. Cause I asked Paul about it again this morning. He said, oh yeah, I'm going to make it. I put Paul into.
We've asked Kelly about it. We've asked.
I will, I will get you an answer by next week.
It's, I would tell you that, uh, Stuart, well, I can't speak for Stuart, but I'm, I'm guessing. But, but I know for me, we will want to be there with you when you put the presentation to the.
I'm going to invite you if you haven't thought about it already.
Yeah, we'll be there. And, and somewhere along the line, how do we get to a discussion around roles and responsibilities and what we can do and what we can't do? Because that whole discussion changes everything. It really does.
The, the, the roles and responsibilities are codified. Um, and I think the, I, I think the, the first step is. Um, let's, let me set up a, a meeting with both of you. Uh, myself and the town manager and we can, we can start that discussion.
Okay.
And that might be rolled into, uh, into, uh. Uh, as, as necessary, um, to, for further discussions, um, either with, uh. Uh, with Councilman Goodberg or the council as a whole. Uh, I'll let the, the town manager needs to, uh, provide direction on how he wants to proceed on that.
Okay.
Uh, but I would tell you for our, for the next HPC meeting, let's, because it's already, you've been working on it, let's, let's work on. Uh, the development of the, of the plaque program. Maybe by that point, the, um, you could provide to me before the meeting, um, a, a criteria. Of how somebody would apply for the plaque.
Why don't I leave these with you and, um. No, I've got them. I've got them right here. We just need it on. Here, this, because I'm not one to reinvent the wheel, okay? Now, this is what the application they use for the county.
Okay.
This is a Maryland Historic Trust. So we just need to get those on our letterhead.
Okay, so you're, are you, let's see what this is. I, okay, so you're, we're patterning it after an existing program is, is what we're, is that the idea?
Because there's just no point in reinventing the wheel.
That's fine. And that makes it a lot easier. And where's the appreciation of public and private buildings that contribute?
I thought I had something from Tony to the Tony head criteria that Tony had given me. Hold on a minute.
Do we have, um, let me ask you this, do we have, um. They have, they're set their, one of their eligibility criterias having homes that are over a hundred years old. Do we have multiple homes that are that? Or are we going to only be giving away five or should we lower that?
That are a hundred years old. We have, you can see here, these are businesses that all are, um, a hundred years old. And these, on the bottom, I haven't even been able to research yet what those buildings were. Plus, I don't know about the Lyman Alley building. I don't know about, uh, the architect, how old those are. So I mean, these are, we were starting with businesses rather than private homes. Those are, those are buildings. Now I've listed there what. Some of the, what some of the businesses are that are in there now, but these are all structured. That are a hundred years old.
Awesome.
Except Martin's Gas Station, that is a site, that's not a structure.
The, um, the preference will be. Playa Liquors location. Is that the original? Because it burned and was rebuilt and I'm not sure what the date you've got there. The, the, the building that's there now, I think was rebuilt in nineteen oh six.
Ah, let's see. Which again, this, this still needs research. This still needs research. So, okay. Bowie's Lunchroom originally owned by Horny, sold to Bowie in about nineteen seventeen. Mr. Horny owned the restaurant and bar, then the Bowie family bought it to add on to make. It into a home and also small restaurant, Ice Cream Bar, the first floor. Ice cream parlor on the first floor until nineteen thirty nine. Now a two-story frame, white building, good condition, owned by Bales.
I think before it became Horny's Restaurant, it. It burned. There was a fire that took out that whole block from over all the way over to Riverfront. It took out everything. It was a tar.
Both sides of the street?
No, no, just that side. Um, it, they, they were unloading tar, I think, from one of the, uh, train cars and a fire. Kept exploding.
Well, I can make a copy of this if you want.
And maybe you see things in there that wouldn't apply to us, but I thought, you know, I thought that was a good start.
Yeah, no.
That the county uses. Why would we reinvent the wheel?
Absolutely.
No, it's, it's good to do it from the existing thing. It's already existing out there and you can customize it for the, for the town's needs. Um, okay, yeah, let me, let me go through this and I can make some, make some suggestions. To you for the next meeting. How about that?
And I say, and I have lots of houses too, that go back, but you know, a lot. I mean, we're already twenty, twenty-five, so a lot of these places are a hundred years old. They're close.
And my house is sixty-five years old, just about.
My house is, is new growth and it's thirty years old.
That's it. I mean, uh.
Hundred years ain't hard.
Or you look back on, um, uh, Prospect Street. Cause when the mayor was talking the other night about Washington Avenue, I said, what about on Prospect Street? Oh, they're bungalows.
Yeah.
But I know those were built in thirty-five, because my, around thirty-five, thirty-eight, because my grandfather built them.
Yep.
So you're talking about a hundred. So you're talking about 100 years. Maybe maybe we don't want to go back 100 years.
Yeah, that's 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 kind of what I'm thinking.
Can easily go back 100 years, start there, because as we grow another by 1930, they're going to be 100.
It starts to.
2030, they're going to be 100 years old.
Yeah.
Yeah, it starts to you you start seeing more more homes when you start getting into maybe the 20s or 30s. But again, it depends on kind of what the tornado destroyed and what it didn't.
That's.
I tell you what, we have lost. You you just can't imagine the homes we've lost.
And and that's why it it might maybe it makes sense if if these are, I assume all these buildings exist, right?
Yes.
Okay, so those are all. So you want to create a program that you're going to be able to to dole out these these plaques to provide some recognition.
Why it was important or that I felt it was important to start with the businesses rather than the residents, just because we keep talking about Charles Street. Yeah, you know, and we keep talking about having that. What do y'all call it with the QR codes and all that?
Yeah.
That's all Charles Street. So that's why I focused on the business district rather than homes.
And it helps create the stuff that everybody can open to see.
Yes.
So that's all.
And that that Main Street view of the town is still the the one that most people identify with the plate, even though it's greatly changed.
It it, yeah. And and oh, by the way, I don't know if the plan by the state is going forward to redo Charles Street. I don't know if that plan got funded. Remember, we, you know, with all the changes on Charles Street, we probably need to be very careful that whatever buildings or anything that they're going to touch during that effort, they don't screw something up that they shouldn't. So or at least get a voice in.
So here's a here this one here, maintenance and stewardship. This goes back to your to your comment about, yeah. Owner owner or proprietor of the building agrees to maintain and preserve the integrity of the building. And the plaque is prescribed and by the rules and guidelines established by the Play Historic Preservation Commission. So if you're going to have programs like this, you need to be able to provide help.
And do we really? And it's it's an open question as to whether we want to have that for that amount of.
That's something. This is something Tony drafted up or something else.
Because I right now, we're not doing that kind of. Doesn't mean we shouldn't, I just say wrong.
Yeah, the the I'll 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 make some comments for you. How about that?
Yeah.
For it and
That's just some place to start.
Yeah, I understand. I I would probably at this point, without having a without having a survey, I'd be I'd be a little bit reluctant to start applying standards. Because when we were saying it's preserving the integrity of the building, well, we don't really have any integrity standard. We we have in the code for for reconstruction. Or excuse me, for rehabilitation. Yes, but we don't. But we don't have we don't have anything that we can really judge it by unless we said it shall follow Secretary Interior standards. And then it becomes a matter of, okay, do we want to adopt those? As which we we probably should. It might be too much for some people to do, and that might turn them off.
That's not where we wanted. I don't think that's where we wanted to go with this. I think what we wanted to do here was acknowledge these buildings are still standing. That plaque represents we we, the town, appreciate that you have restored, that you've kept this building standing. You've restored it on the exterior. As part of our history.
Yeah, sort of like.
We're not here to tell them they can have purple shutters or they can't.
Absolutely. I would hope not, but there are times there are times when it would be lovely to have a finger in that pie that if somebody wants to come by with a wrecking ball and a bulldozer and just start wiping things out to at least be able to say, wait a minute, you know, even if you can't really stop them and say, no, you absolutely can't do this, but at least can we talk about this, you know?
That's where preservation becomes hard with a lot of communities, is that there's there's a there's that that recognition and and respect for somebody to be able to do what they want with their property, right? And then there's the the broader approach that if somebody owns it, somebody owns an asset that is personally belongs to them, but it becomes part of it 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 becomes an iconic building or site that people cherish as a community. How far do you to your point, want to put your finger on the pie to say, hey, we're not going to let you to destroy the integrity of the building by completely changing, you know, a craftsman building into, you know, a modernist building. You know, right, right now, that that we don't.
Years robot homes right in this town.
We had that happen.
Right. And so that's that becomes the challenge later on, but we need to know where we're at with the with the survey and 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 some of these other things first.
But I'm telling you, the town, the town is an uproar. Uproar over these solar panels.
But separate, separate, separate issue.
Well, but those people own that property. They
Understand.
How much was their right to put those on that property, you know?
Okay, well, let me let me let me throw some look at this and throw some ideas for you. If we have
Actually, the county is our biggest, one of our biggest wrecking balls when it comes to wiping out your history.
Yeah.
They come in and just okay, we're going to put this here. It's there.
And, yeah, and there's hopefully we can develop maybe a better relationship with the county to see what what might be possible, particularly along the the around the perimeters of the town. I don't know.
Just the opportunity to to go in and do some rescue work before they you know, because a lot of this stuff happened under our radar. It was I personally my personal opinion, I think it was kept away from us on purpose.
It was. It was.
It
The horse was out of the barn from the time we went.
Those houses.
Yeah.
I tell you, as a property owner, I wish they never ever.
Easy.
But it painted such a nice picture. We were going to have the library. We were going to have the carousel. No reason to tear the house down.
We could pick those houses up. We could certainly pick up one of those.
Yeah, that's my budget.
We'd have.
I know. Well, it's no, that that's for you. That's your copy.
That's my copy. Okay.
Hey, look at the second page, by the way, is what we submitted in terms of what we asked for and what we're going to do. This is what we we gave. We sat down with Kelly and developed this at one of our meetings. So it's just a handwritten thing, but this is what we were planning to do. So we asked for the $8100, $3,000 was it for the our previous budget was five. We asked for three more because the firehouse was being added to our activities. But that that was the big plus. But you can see at the end of the day, well, I don't know what was done to decide what the budget should be, but they settled on 3,000. So we got we lost from the previous year. We went down. So and I don't know what of this list. They said, ah, we're not going to do those things.
And it's probably because we haven't spent enough of our prior budgets.
Well, that that could be. You know, if you know, the idea that we don't waste waste money just for the sake of wasting it is is probably a good trait that everybody should have.
We wanted to spend.
In good governance.
Couldn't bear it. Had to get it done.
Yeah, I know. Worked for the government forever. So but in any case, why they turned around and cut it like that? At while at the same time, we got stopped from spending money we tried not to lose.
How long do we ask this question? How long is the has the HPC go?
Oh, 18.
Oh, yeah, open to us for.
And you're asking when we were established?
Yeah. You're established in 18th. Have they been providing a budget to the council or the to the HPC since the establishment?
Yeah, it's been it. It's been a a simple process. I won't argue because it you know, when I took over the chairmanship, it was essentially here's what you got last year. Here's what they're going to put in the budget next year. Okay, yes, okay. We didn't. We didn't. We didn't. And last year, they said, well, we need some more detail. So we created the the detail list as we had it at the time.
Okay.
And that's what they got turned in. And then I don't know what happened.
This was for this was what you'd submitted for.
Current budget.
I think they bumped us a little bit up when we were doing the train station museum. They gave us.
Yeah, they gave us some money to operate that and and you can see the amount we have for continue operations.
Place that the train station museum came out of other budgets too.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it didn't come out of our budget.
Yeah. Yeah, there's certain things that they still do, like maintaining the building. It doesn't come out of our budget. Maintaining the building comes out of the public office budget. All right, well, I'll find you. I'll find you an answer for for that this by next week. Okay, do you want me to make a copy of this or do you have one?
No, I don't have one.
Would you like a copy? I can make a copy of this for myself. That way you don't lose it. Okay. All right, I'll do that. Okay.
And what about the one for the county, that application?
Yes, I'll make. I'll make.
Yeah, that's right.
Make a copy of one for myself for these things. And you've got you've given me this.
Oh, there was something I wanted to add to that list of things that I thought about in that. We need a program to or to recommend a program to digitize and organize the town's collection of history files. The town has its own collection of history. I think it's on file upstairs somewhere. It's in just folders. It's a whole mishmash of things, a lot of newspaper clippings, but old photos I at one point, they even had the the original mockup pages for the Centennial Book by Wermuth. And they're all just up there kind of in files and folders.
Yeah.
They I'd love to see an effort to get that digitized and and put online or or preserved in some way better than it is because.
Yeah, it's going to be up to the clerk to do that.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's outside your purview on that, but.
Well, I'm just recommending. I mean, even to the point of asking volunteers to come in and just help like scan catalog, you know.
Tom, that's that's, yeah, that's that's probably a good Kelly wanted to ask when it comes to yeah, uh, next budget time. To see where she will see what she might be able to recommend as part of her budget for that.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, you're right. I will tell you that digitizing things is the hardest thing to do. I've the communities I've worked in, I've yet to see somebody have a successful digitalization program. It the the paperwork just flows faster than the time that it takes to digitize things. And to get somebody to work on it meticulously every day, it it's just it never fully happens. And it's you would think that it would that big of a deal, right? But some whatever reason, it just there's usually usually those communities have some post changes, have some records that are digitized.
Okay.
And I'll there's a bunch of other ones that are in a we're in the in a room where and you go walk in the room now, oh, my God. All these boxes that are tightly packed together.
Well, it's just that you can't access them. I mean, you know, the building's locked. You got to get somebody to escort you up there.
It's actually worth doing, absolutely.
Patty, so current Patty.
So I don't know. That that sounds to me like something that could be a volunteer project or a committee project or something a commission set up to come in and do the grunt work.
That's and that might be something that Kelly would get volunteers for, but that's 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 those are town records.
So, yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I guess they are town records. These are, I mean, these are actually items donated and given to the town more than anything else, and newspaper clippings and that kind of stuff they've been taking out. Old newspapers and mockups for books, photographs, things that people have just said, hey, this is to the town. And the town kept it.
Yeah. Yeah, it sounds like there's a lot of stuff in there. It's a lot of good information.
I think they also put out a call back during the Centennial to get artifacts and things like that that they could use, and they still have a lot of that as well. So it would be lovely to get that out in the sunlight somewhere.
Yeah, no, I agree. Long term, yeah. Okay, so just for our record, so if I get a motion motion second and a vote to to authorize staff to bring forward the 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 draft work plan subject to the modifications presented in the in the August 1st 25 document.
The one specific recommendation to move the firehouse.
With with with.
Yes, with subject to modifications, I guess. So, yeah.
So.
Yes.
That will need to be in there and then, yeah.
But we don't vote on that workshop. Or do we?
I can there's no reason I don't think you you have to do it at a regular meeting. We could. I can wait. We can do it at the at the next meeting. So if you have the addition.
I mean, if we're going to do something, let's do it, you know.
You're right. This it is. It is, I guess, technically a workshop. We have. This is this is all members present, right, for the for the commission? Let's for it for Councilman Gutenberg's awareness, let's let's just bring it to the next meeting on there and I'll do a little summary of what of what we talked about and then we can we can move it forward. Okay. With that, I think Council Goodwin should should be given that opportunity.
He just couldn't make it today. He was planning to be.
But he'll be available for our other meeting.
Absolutely. Yeah, I've talked.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Excited about doing that.
Okay, good. So we just close the meeting.
Not using closes up everything.
All right. You know, it's All right. I appreciate everybody's coming out and their time and your and your your comments. If I had, if I if.